I am gonna go down the list and see if everyone's here. Let's see, yes, looks like we are. Okay. What I'd like to do now is call the meeting to order. I want to first announce that the North San Mateo County Sanitation District meeting has been canceled for this evening. And later on after the council meeting, we do have the Daily City Housing Development Finance Agenda Agency meeting this evening. Okay, with that being said, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today is July 27th. Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the city council. If I can have everyone please stand for the pledge to the flag, please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. All right, Madam City Clerk, if I may have a roll call, please.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Mr. Buenaventura? Mr. Sylvester?
Present. Thank you so much. All right, next item is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of July 13th. Can I have a motion from someone, please?
Motion to approve the minutes from July 13th.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the approval of the agenda for tonight. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve agenda?
Second.
First and a second. Any further discussion? All right, the agenda for this evening has been approved. Next item is the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please? Looks like-
Motion. Okay.
I don't think there's anything.
There is one item.
One item, right.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is it okay to pull that one item, the resolution?
Sure you can. Would you like to pull it?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind at all.
Okay.
Okay, so since that's the only item on the agenda this evening, so instead of looking for a full and complete approval of the consent agenda at this time, since we only have one item, we will go ahead and discuss the resolution, which is item number one on fixed asset policy. All right, Councilmember Di Giovanni, did you have a question on this or wanted to make notice or?
Yes, I would like for if Mr. High wouldn't mind explaining exactly what our approval of fixed asset policy is, since there are several people have sent me texts and asked. And so the transparency to the public, just if you would mind explaining that, that would be great. But that has under here are the other items. Thank you, Mr. High.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members and Madam City Manager. This policy essentially allows city council to affirm the fixed asset policy the city and its entities has had, except it increases the limit of capitalizing assets to $25,000. Previously, the limit was, or the threshold was $5,000. You know, basically vehicles, almost any vehicle is now well over $25,000. All we're doing is just affirming what's in the comprehensive annual financial report, affirming depreciation lives. But this policy was really never, as far as we could tell, affirmed by city council. So we just wanted to give city council the opportunity, since fixed assets are, you know, a substantial part of the city's asset base.
Thank you, Mr. High. And actually, that's great because I think that proves that we are making policies that around our monies, which have never been there before as a council. And I think that's a right move and I appreciate your hard work in this. Thank you, Mr. High. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any further questions on the fixed asset policy? Councilmember Di Giovanni, would you like to make a motion to approve?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the item number one fixed asset policy under our consent agenda. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving item number one as a resolution on fixed asset policy located under the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Okay, that resolution has passed. That is the end of the consent agenda. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to move next to the item number two, which is under public hearings, the city's H U D Consolidated One Year Action Plan for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. And I'd like to turn it over to staff. Ms. Selig, Gwen, please, or Linell.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. And I will be presenting tonight. Do you see my screen? Just want to make sure.
Yes.
Yes.
So I will be presenting tonight on the revised one-year action plan. Okay, so on June 8th, the city council approved the one-year action plan that describes how the city will allocate its community development, block grant and home funds. And these funds are from the Department of Housing and Urban Development and are used to assist lower-income households. C D B G is intended to provide decent housing and a suitable living environment and expand economic opportunities. And home is for the purpose of increasing and maintaining the supply of affordable housing. So the revision tonight does not affect the C D B G allocation. I provide this here just as a reference of what was approved. The revision that we are proposing tonight is to use the home funds for emergency tenant-based rental assistance, also known as T B R A. When we presented the action plan back in June, the proposal was to use the home funds for affordable housing development. The city has been receiving home funds since 2003 and we've always used home funds to increase the supply of affordable housing. We've used home funds for various habitat projects, construction of 6800 Mission Street and Hillcrest Gardens. And I may be forgetting something else, but that's what we use home funds for. Because of the COVID-19 pandemic, HUD has issued several waivers to facilitate the use of home funds to respond to COVID-19. Some of these waivers include eliminating the CHODO set aside requirement and increasing the cap that you can use for program administration from 10% to 25%. And specifically, HUD has issued waivers to facilitate the use of home funds for emergency tenant-based rental assistance. Some of these waivers include eliminating the market analysis and certification that typically is required in the consolidated plan. It eliminates having to do a housing quality inspection of the unit to be assisted. And it also allows for more flexibility in the documentation of income and rent reasonableness. And these waivers expire on December 31st, 2020. So given these waivers and given situation that we find ourselves in and how COVID-19 has impacted our community, staff is proposing to use some of the home funds for emergency for T B R A. Since June 8th, HUD has conducted several webinars to help cities like Daily City who aren't familiar with administering a T B R A program to feel more comfortable with it. So I'm just going to go over some of the factors that we feel lead to the demand for rental assistance. The unemployment rate for San Mateo County in June is 10.8%, so at around 11%. The additional $600 in unemployment benefits that was provided through the CARES Act is expiring on July 31st. The county eviction moratorium is currently set to, was extended recently, just last week through August 31st. When the moratorium ends, renters will need to pay the back rent due. And as you know, unfortunately, the number of COVID cases are increasing. And so with the number of COVID cases are increasing, jobs are coming back. So several businesses that have reopened have had to close. And in addition to just the number of jobs that are available, more, more people are being infected with the virus. So if they're lucky enough to have a job, if they get infected with the virus, they aren't able to go to work. And year-to-date, I spoke with Pat Baum of the Daily City Partnership this afternoon and she reported that year-to-date, the Daily City Partnership has received 404 COVID-related applications. So the revision that we are proposing tonight is, as I said, to use some of the home funds for emergency home T B R A. So for 2021, we are receiving an allocation of $380,827. And we currently have prior year home funds of about 1.062 million. So we are proposing that these funds be allocated in the following manner. For program admin, we propose taking advantage of the increase in admin cap. So $148,513 for program administration. For emergency home T B R A, we propose using prior year home funds in the amount of $750,000. And there's still some, and then there's money, the balance would be used for an affordable housing project. And we don't have a project identified yet, and when we do, we would go back to the committee. So the emergency home T B R A funds will assist households that make up to 60% of the area median income who are experiencing financial hardship as a result of COVID-19. As I said earlier, this program would end on December 31st because that's when the waivers would expire. As I said earlier, this program would end on December 31st because that's when the waivers would expire, would end. And based on an average assistance of $4,000 per household, we estimate we can help 175 households. And we would be able to start making these funds available by September 2020. As I said, we haven't administered this program. And prior to administering a T B R A program, we will need to draft policies and procedures. And the $750,000 being proposed would supplement additional funds that the city has previously provided for rental assistance. This includes about $431,000 in CDBGCV and $100,000 in S V 341 funds. So this item had required us to public, provide a public review period and a public notice. So the public review period was from July 17th to July 27th. The public notice was posted in newspapers and the city's website and emailed to various agencies serving Daly City residents. Today, I know that council has received several comments on this item. And I have Pat Baum available if council had any other questions about what she's seeing right now in terms of the request for rental assistance. And so in closing my presentation, I make the following recommendations. That council conduct a public hearing on the revised one-year action plan that considers the use of home funds for emergency T B R A. So allocate the funds for the various CDBG and home activities. Approve the one-year action plan, so we may submit it to HUD. And adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or her designee to sign the appropriate forms and certifications as part of the submission to HUD. And so with that, I am available to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Seligwenn. All right, do we have any questions from council at this time?
No, no questions, but, oh.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Linell, thank you for that presentation and sharing with us where we needed to pivot most importantly during COVID-19 and the crisis that we've been seeing. You know, I think it's a testament to the staff in listening to the needs of the community. Most importantly, with rental support for tenants. It's extremely important, as we know, there's a lot, a lot of folks there that have lost their jobs, are in furloughs. And so, you know, moving with insuring 750K for rental assistance with helping at least 175 households is so important. I know even earlier this, in May, you know, the city manager administered $100,000 to help in this in this facet and need for the community. And so, you know, this pivot is really a testament, and I am in full support of being able to support those most in need, especially in these crucial times. And I want to thank staff for that work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Dejavani?
Thank you. First, yeah, to go along with the Vice Mayor, thank you, Linell. I know that you guys put a lot of work into this, and a lot of thought, and listen to the community. And Ms. Pat Baum, you're there on the front lines, seeing these people when they come in. And I just have a quick question, Ms. Baum. If by the time they get the application, I know that they have to have an emergency funding, how quickly are they able to access those funds? Does it depend on their situation or, and thank you for doing this. I know it's overwhelming, and you're understaffed is what I understand as well. So in these COVID-19, I know that it's been quite extensive. So please thank everyone over there as well. Thank you, Ms. Baum.
Thanks, Ms. Dejavani. Yes, actually, we are increasing our, we've doubled our staff already. And thanks to the city allocation of the 435,000, which should be coming in September, plus the administrative cost for a fourth case manager. We have been able to hire a case manager, and we have the extra staff now to try and keep up with the demand. As Linell said, we have 404 applications so far year-to-date that are COVID-related. We spent over 300, nearly 350,000 already of our existing SMC Strong and COVID-19 relief funds. Actually, our COVID-19 relief fund started out at 111,000 as our allocation, and it is exhausted. We have no COVID relief funds left in that particular bank. We do still have some SMC Strong left, about 100,000. We have some CSBG left, about 16,000. We have a little bit of Measure K allocated, 10,000. And then we have about 75,000 of the 100,000 that the city manager was able to allocate for us remaining. So right now, we have, without the 435,000 that the city council allocated recently, we have about 218,000 left to fund the remaining, the remaining applications. The applications are responded to. We have both online applications through DCpartnership.org for any of the community that is listening and wants to know how to go about applying for rental, rental assistance. So the COVID relief funds application is online, and it's in English and Spanish. And all of the people that do apply are responded to within two weeks for a preliminary pre-screening and a review of their budget and their income and their situation. And then it can take anywhere between four to six weeks for us to get all the documentation that is required for, from the applicants, which is rather lengthy. We have to have a statement from the landlord as to how much they paid and how much they still owe. We have to have W9s. We have to have identification copies of everybody in the household. We have to have wage statements. We have to have three months' worth of bank statements. So it's a rather extensive process. It's almost like applying for a loan. But this is the requirements that have been mandated by the different sources of funds, whether they're charitable or coming from SMC Strong, in order to process it and make sure we're vetting our clients properly and that they do, they are in need at this time. So I hope I've answered your questions.
Yeah, you did. Thank you, Ms. Baum, for that hard work and everybody over there. So for those of you at home that, if you don't know by now, Daly City Partnership is, I would consider, our umbrella of our services. If you're in need during this COVID period, I would recommend you reach out to them, whether it be any kind of sources, no matter your age, they have the social workers on board. And legal aid is there as well. So really appreciate all the hard work and being under that umbrella, especially under these tense times. And thank you, Linell. Amazing work. And again, I support, just like our Vice Mayor, and I'm going to speak for the rest of council. But those in need, we don't know when this is going to end. And people are in pretty bad shape. They don't have a job to go back to. And we are trying to be there for them and to give an increase and get you more help so that we can help others faster. And this is, this is all for everyone in our community. So there are things being done. Of course, we always want more, and we just take it as it comes. And thank you, city manager, for having the foresight for putting those other funds and being supportive. I know that she's been pretty supportive, Ms. Baum, and I appreciate that relationship that you have with the city and continued, and Linell, the same to you and the staff. Very, very important. Thank you very much. Full support.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
I would like to also speak on this matter as well, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to just note, I have no questions, just comments. Just wanted to say thank you to the staff for putting this together. And Linell, when you put up all those deadlines of eviction moratoriums and these different deadlines are coming up, they're just literally around the corner. And I think that anything that we can do to support those affected by COVID-19 is very urgent and necessary. So thank you to the staff for making this happen.
All right, thank you, Dr. Rod. Any other comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Buena Ventura.
Thank you. So good evening, everybody. You know, I try only to speak and when I try to limit my words and try to encourage everybody else to go forward and speak their thoughts. And I really appreciate everyone's comments. I enjoy listening to it. And it gives me great hope and gives me ideas as well. First, I want to say thank you to the staff for really having the vision to put this forward and to show initiative and to caring about the people who are impacted by our current situation and the need to help with the rent of so many households because they're being affected just tremendously. And I'm very, very grateful that we are doing something about it. I have to say, however, that I think we, as a council, need to start analyzing and evaluating all the programs that we support by always being mindful of what we can do to begin to dismantle the system of systemic racism and improve upon the Black Lives Movement and its core issues. You know, there's not going to be one size-fits-all answer to the problems of systemic racism. But it does require a comprehensive review and an action plan on what we can and should do to begin to dismantle systemic racism in our community, in our government. So what am I talking about? A perfect example is what we are all in, 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 in our good hearts, in our true intentions, is to, this, this resolution to help with the rent, which is tremendous. But if you look at it, if you examine it, if you shed a light on it and you examine it closely, is it really helping the black and brown people of our community? What I'm talking about is this. I just heard that getting this assistance is almost like getting a loan, where you have to have a bank statement and you have to have W2s. I question how those kind of requirements are problematic for the poor community who don't have bank accounts, who struggle to get jobs, who may not have the W2s that are needed. So this is what I'm talking about when I, when I, you know, nobody is intending to discriminate against them. But when you analyze different projects and problems and you go to the core meat of it, you will see and expose some of the inherent problems of systemic racism. And that's what I'm talking about. I would like to find a way where the requirements aren't so burdensome for the people of color to get this kind of assistance. Because we may intend to do the right thing, but if the effect is that we are still excluding the people who need to get these loans or these rental assistance, then we're contributing to the problem over and over again. And we're not helping the people that we really need to help. And so I would like us to find a way to dismantle some of those requirements because it's just not fair, and it doesn't reach the people we need to reach. And the Black Lives Movement has heightened my consciousness of it, and it's caused me to want to dig deeper into every issue to see and feel what's happening. So that's one, 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 one issue I'm concerned about. The other issue is the staff report, and Linell didn't touch on it, and I don't falter for that, but it talked about our CDBG funding. And I don't think there was any change that was proposed for that funding. Well, I think perhaps we should consider changing it. And what am I talking about? So when I read the report, there was a big chunk, almost half a million dollars, or 400, 400 something thousand, to loans to homeowners so that they can improve, and albeit low-income homeowners, to do the necessary restoration rehabilitation of their homes. That's all well and good. But if you look at that again, we're committing almost 500, a million, half a million dollars to 12 households. That's the number I saw. 12 houses, of which you have to be a homeowner. And again, I'm going back to, where are the Black Lives in that, in that equation? Because are they homeowners? Will they be reached by that project? Or is the, the, the poor community going to be disenfranchised once again? And so I'm not sure that that is an investment or an allocation that needs to stay the way it is. I think we should reexamine how we can spread the wealth, if you will, to other communities and not just homeowners. Which, again, I'm grateful for what we're doing about the rental assistance. That's great, again. But I am trying to expose what some of the problems are with that as well. And so I see it also with this CDBG funding. And quite frankly, I don't know what the magic number is when it comes to where in the CDBG funding should we defund, if the word has been used in, 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 in the news. But it should be spread out. So maybe a 10% cut from all those programs that we're funding? Maybe those should be set aside to Black Lives Matter projects or issues, some of which maybe we haven't come up with yet, and maybe some ideas we'll all come up with together. Or maybe take a big chunk of it just out of the loan program for households. I don't know. All I'm saying is, we need to look at the way we are analyzing things and see if we are contributing to the disenfranchisement of the black community, the brown community, and is there a way we can start to dismantle systemic racism in the community and in the government? So I, I, I hope my colleagues would give some comments because I, I don't have the answer. I just want to raise the issue.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. What I'd like to do, Ms. Baum, did I see you raise your hand? Yeah, if you can take all these comments down and feel free to answer them all at once. Because if you do it all now, we're going to go back and forth with the debate because I do have questions.
Thank you. I do have some new data regarding Councilmember Buena Ventura's comments.
All right, thank you. The first question I have for Linell is, did we have a committee meeting on this? And did that committee decide to increase the allocation up to the revision that you're requesting up to 700,000?
Yes, we met with the Affordable Housing Committee on June 23rd, and we presented the idea of using home funds for rental assistance. And the committee suggested $750,000 at the time.
Okay, who's on that committee? Okay, who's on that committee, if I may ask? Because for some reason, I just don't remember, and I do remember the 400,000 additional that was allocated, I believe, from CDBG through the home funds, but I just, I don't recall 700,000 dollars, and I'm just wondering if any of the committee members on board right now do recall the requested increase? And if you can report out.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I do remember this coming up as far as rental assistance needs. And it was a discussion that we had at the committee around how to support those that are being impacted by the loss of jobs and just the need of support for rent and rental assistance. I do recall that in our discussion within the Affordable Housing Committee. And that was something that was brought up. As far as the amount, I don't recall the amount, but I do know that there was an initiative and definitely in that moment, an agreement on my end to move forward in looking for dollars to support that particular need around rental assistance.
Okay, thank you. You know, I just thought at least the committee would report out and say they're recommending, but to look at
You and me, Mayor.
Yeah, and for some reason, I don't recall the amount of 700 something thousand, so I do recall that we had to, we decided we needed more for rental assistance. So thank you very much. This is for Ms. Baum. Ms. Baum, thank you so much for the presentation and looking at it. And I understand having to vet everyone and to, you know, just to make sure that the money's going the right place. And not that I've taken advantage of it, but it sounds like you have, it's like going through a mortgage process and indeed, it's difficult. However, I do agree that if we can streamline it instead of two to six weeks, if we can streamline it and get these funds out much quicker, that would be great. You know, I'm open to ideas to look as to how we can do that. Number two, can we verify who these funds are going out to? I mean, I don't need a racial breakdown, but are we also including the undocumented folks in this? Okay, it's just a question, you know, because I know some of the undocumented are unable to get funding from the federal government, and I think they're the ones being mostly hit through the COVID-19. I'm also concerned about our seniors. I'm just wondering if there can be a subsidy for our seniors who are very vulnerable at this time, and some of them are facing rent increases. I mean, Ms. Baum, I know that that's not within your purview, but it's something that we need to consider if we're looking at assisting more folks than we can. And the last, I wanted to confirm, the funds here are coming from the federal government and not the city of Daly City. Basically, it's funds that the city of Daly City has received from the federal government, but it's not being taken out of our budget. Just wanted to confirm that as well. And Ms. Baum, a question came up regarding people of color. If you can enlighten us to inform us, are there other folks other than people of color? Or is it illegal to ask their race at this particular time when they're applying? Or, you know, because I know for a mortgage, it's optional question that you can put down if you want to disclose your ethnicity. So if you can help us there, I would appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So I do want to address all of these issues, and I want to apologize to Councilmember Buena Ventura. I probably wasn't as clear about our vetting process as I could have been. But we actually went to the Board of Supervisors at the mid-May because there was a trend to have people who were not citizens or perhaps were working on a cash basis to come in and request funds for their rent. So we pleaded with them to relax some of the COVID-19 and SMC strong restrictions, so that if somebody could prove that they did have income, they were paying their bills in cash, but they may not have had a bank statement, that we could still help them. And citizenship is not one of the questions that we ask on our applications either, so if they want to reveal where, if they are citizens, that's fine, but it's not one of the questions that we ask on our applications. So basically, what happened in May was that they did relax some of the requirements, and so we could submit an application without a bank statement. We could submit an application if they were renting from a major tenant and they were only renting a room, but they needed help in paying for that room. So all of these things were allowed, and that is one of the reasons that our COVID-19 relief fund is diminished because we have done so many of those applications already. The other thing, too, regarding demographics, is that we currently have about 60% of the Latinx population, and of that, about 30% are monolingual Spanish, and we do have five caseworkers who are Spanish bilingual. So we are helping that demographic, the next demographic, it would be Arabic. We only have about 5% African-American. And as far as seniors go, surprisingly, we have not had that many applications from seniors, and I think the theory is that they're on fixed incomes, they're already on social security, so they're already struggling with their rent, but they haven't lost income, so that is the theory that we are seeing, that perhaps they haven't applied yet. A few seniors, yes, we have. We have had a few, but not a significant number. And then as far as the city funds, you know, like I said, we're down to 218,000 right now, which is supposed to last us for the month of August. Until the 435,000 comes in from the city in September, we may be in a little bit of a critical basis in trying to continue with the rental assistance. And did that answer all the questions that we had?
Thank you, Ms. Baum. It answered my questions, and you've spread additional light on the vetting and provided an update as to the application process. And I have to say, my hat's off to you because you're doing an outstanding job. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Linnell, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to your question. So these funds have to be related to COVID-19. So if you've lost your job because of COVID-19, then you can use these funds. Unfortunately, you can't use these funds for, if you get a rent increase. So they're restricted to, it has to be related to COVID-19. Also, I mentioned earlier that HUD has eliminated some requirements to facilitate the use of home funds. And so some of that requirement includes income documentation, so so there will be, we will be looking at ways to streamline the requirements to address some of the concerns that have been brought up earlier.
Great. Thank you, Linnell. All right, then, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for, thank you, Pat and Linnell. You know, when I was looking at the report, I did notice similarly to Councilmember Buena Ventura, the amount of funding going to the rehab program. I know that this is a signature program that we have, but when I look at in comparison to the other programs, it is about, what, 420,000? And I think for me is a reassessment of also what can that be utilized for? I know there is a need, but seeing that it's a large, large amount, and in that respect, I'd like to also look into an analysis of how we can maybe utilize it for other purposes and maybe still have that program, but at 420,000 out of the allocation that I see above, it is a large portion of the dollars presented.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, piggybacking on the Vice Mayor on that one part, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that along with that, there's a lot of seniors do use that particular program. Now, things may have changed demographic-wise on who uses it, but because they've been in their homes for a long time, and perhaps their spouse has passed, and they need repairs on the home. So if, along with what the Vice Mayor has asked to provide, please let us know, if you don't mind. I thought it was a large portion of seniors that do use that particular program.
Yes, we, typically seniors that take advantage, that have been taking advantage of the program. Betsy, did you want to add anything?
If I may, the program is almost entirely utilized by extremely low-income seniors. And usually, the extent of repairs are such that the only way they can continue to live independently is if they get a rehab loan. We find them without a functioning bathroom or without a functioning kitchen, no heat, no hot water heater. So yeah, it's primarily seniors with pretty severe dilapidation in their home.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So yeah, when we were looking, because I knew people that were part of that program, some of the seniors had reached out, and you're right, that they're in that home, and they with no heat or anything. So I didn't know if our other council was aware of that. But this is primarily does support, as the mayor said, was looking for something to support seniors. And Mr. Mayor, this does support seniors primarily, or they would not be able to stay in their unsafe conditions. And it's pretty scary when you actually see the conditions they've been living in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Betsy. And thank you for your hard work as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dejirvani, I will defer my final comment till later. Unless we have any other comments right now, I'd like to open it up to a public hearing, public.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We have four comments tonight, and I will read the first one. It's from Emily Ling, and it says, "Hello, my name is Emily, and I'm ready to ask you to increase funding for rental assistance as you discuss the rental assistance program today. COVID-19 has impacted us all in many ways, but it has been particularly hard on the people, on the many people who have lost jobs during this time. Without a steady source of income, people are being forced to choose between paying rent and feeding their children. Housing is a human right, and especially more so during shelter-in-place, where our homes not only help people stay safe, but also serve as workplaces, schools, gyms, and much more. The financial burden of paying rent, often via high-interest loans or incurring credit card debt, is massive and can have far-reaching consequences. For these reasons, I urge you to maintain the fund and increase the funding available to better support and protect the people of Daly City. Thank you for your time." The next comment is from Shaquille Ali, City Council Candidate and Board President of Jefferson Elementary School District. It says, "Greetings, Mayor and Council. My name is Shaquille Ali, Jefferson Elementary School District Board President and current candidate for Daly City Council. I am a longtime resident here in Daly City for over 40 years. I am blessed to have worked during COVID-19 as a high school teacher, a school board president, and in other grassroots capacities. I have not accumulated debt because I have continued to work, and yet I stand in solidarity with those who cannot work. And I stand in solidarity and empathy with those who continue to work because they are not eligible for the federal stimulus money due to racist policies that devalue the sacrifice of immigrant essential workers. Our whole region is an, quote, 'effective time bomb.' People of color, households headed by women, and families with young children are at the greatest risk. We are currently in a moratorium during shelter-in-place, so renters cannot be evicted because of non-rent payment right now. However, when the shelter-in-place is over, they will have to pay all those months of non-rent payment. How will they do this? I urge you to think about the needs of those who are not able to afford rent in the first place, let alone during this crisis time. Our residents are asking for affordable housing and housing justice through Just Cause Rent Control/Stabilization Rental Assistance and Home Ownership Assistance Programs, using the already mandated federal HUD funds to help renters in an innovative way to reach a win-win for everyone. Thank you in advance for your leadership in this matter." Okay, the next comment is from Abigail Teller, and it says, "My name is Abby Teller, and I work in Daly City with Faith in Action Bay Area. As part of this work, I make calls to community members registered as voters. Each week, I hear stories of families who suddenly lost their jobs in March due to COVID-19 and are now choosing between paying rent and feeding their children or moving out of Daly City. One family I talked to at the beginning of July has over $5,000 in credit card debt from paying their rent the past few months. I urge the council to increase the funding for the rental assistance program to $1 million. Doing so will help Daly City families stay in their homes and will help landlords pay their mortgage, benefiting both parties. I also would like to express my disappointment in the lack of translation at this meeting and on the end on the online forum and agenda. 66.4% of the population in Daly City speaks a language other than English at home. To truly represent and serve your constituents, I urge you to provide translation options for future meetings and on the public comments mission form. Thank you." The next comment is from Eduardo Gonzalez. It says, "Hello, my name is Eduardo Gonzalez, and I am a Daly City resident and also the program manager at the Youth Leadership Institute. I am submitting a comment today in support of using the city's HUD funding for rental assistance in Daly City. Please consider allocating a total of $1 million to these efforts. Two families can be supported and cared for in this dire time of need and support. As you know, this pandemic has affected so many people in our own community. I have called community members to check in how they are doing during this time, and I've heard from the need for housing assistance now more than ever. You need to think about keeping people in their homes. You need to think about how this will help protect seniors and people with low income from being displaced. You need to think about the youth that will be starting their academic year virtually. There needs to be a space for them to stay engaged and having a roof over their heads and a support system that is not filled with stress and uncertainty can be prevented with this rental assistance. This is one way you, as decision-makers for this city, can show up for your community and help the most impacted that have heavily, that have been heavily hit by the pandemic. Thank you for your time." Okay, and then there's one more. Hold on one second as I pull that up. Okay, there's a couple more. The first is from Holly Lim. It says, "Hello, my name is Holly Lim, and I'm a Daly City resident. I'd like to comment on Agenda Item Number Two, City's HUD Consolidated One-Year Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2021. I ask that this fund be used for additional rental assistance funding in Daly City. On a local and national level, many have become unemployed or have had their hours and salaries reduced due to the pandemic, and many are struggling to pay their rent, utilities, and food. The problem is exacerbated in Daly City, where a two-bedroom rents for about $3,000-plus. Please help Daly City residents like me and my neighbors stay in our homes." And I do believe there is another one. This is from Nick Ochi Pinti. It says, "The city's HUD Consolidated One-Year Action Plan presents us with a vital opportunity to help nearly half of our city's residents who are renters. Utilizing these funds to assist people struggling with rental assistance as they, many of, many who are our essential workers, are trying to maintain residency, secure housing, and prevent eviction and or homelessness. This is a major opportunity to support our city's diverse immigrant and heavily socio-economically impacted community. Given the local, state, and national policy movement leaning forward on expanding eviction moratorium measures as we navigate a public health and economic crisis, I strongly encourage and support the city council moving to allocate the 750,000 of HUD funding for additional rental assistance funding in Daly City. Thank you for your consideration of this and moving our city forward during these." crises. Okay, the next one is from Rod Spikes. And it says, hi, my name is Rod Spikes, and I am a program coordinator with the Youth Leadership Institute in San Mateo, California, and a strong advocate for the youth by the Daly City community. Today, I am here to leave a comment on the HUD Consolidated One-Year Action Plan for the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One. I believe that it is imperative that this fines be implemented to protect those at risk of eviction from their home due to the issues from COVID nineteen. It's important for you to do things needed to protect the future of the youth in your community. These youth have already been stripped of their education, some prom, some a traditional graduation. Life will never be the same for any of the youth in our world today, so it's important that we fight for one thing to remain the same, and that is the home they grew up in. Because of COVID, many families have been stripped of one, two, even three household incomes and are struggling to even put a meal on their family's table. Knowing that the extra incentives from the government on COVID relief programs ended this past week, it's important that on a local level, we support and protect our communities. So I'd like to side with the push of this fund to be used in favor of protecting our renters and our families, and especially our youth. Thank you for your time. Let me just double check um to make sure I got all of these. Hold on one second. Um, there's another one from Colleen Miller. It says rental assistance is necessary due to COVID nineteen. And those are all the comments we've received on this item.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Stolpe. All right. At this time, I would like to close uh the public hearing. Uh, do we have?
Yes, Mayor, I, there's another comment here. I would, should I, should I just read it real quick?
Sure, why not? Yes.
It's from Nadia Conrad, and it says, I work with the community, and while phone banking with Daly City residents since March, I have heard of residents who have lost their jobs or portions of their income. Many have applied for rental assistance, and unfortunately, many seniors and people who do not speak English have trouble accessing online applications. Now that, now the back rent is becoming a looming debt which is building interest. Please increase the rental assistance fund to at least one million, so we can help people pay down their debt. Just want to double check I got all of these. Uh, yes, I did. Okay, we're, we're done now.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Stolpe. All right, I would like to close the public hearing at this time. Do we have any further comments before we take a vote? Uh, Ms. Baum, go ahead, please.
Just, I just want to clarify from the last comment that we are still accepting paper applications that if people are not, do not have access to technology, that they can come into our community center at three fifty Ninetieth Street on the first floor, um, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Friday, and pick up a paper application for rental assistance, both in English and Spanish.
Thank you, Ms. Baum. Hey, there any other comments?
Uh, yes, I have a question, Mayor, for staff.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, for Betsy, thank you so much for addressing the question around um the assistance to the rehabilitation for residents and understanding it's for those most in need and inhabitable um households um to make it safe and for them. I'd like to, I'd like to know um on a yearly basis, has these dollars been utilized to its maximum annually?
Um, no, we, we freak, we, we sometimes have funds left over, and sometimes we use them all. It just, it really depends on the number of applications and the number that go forward, because a lot of, some of the loans fall out, so we don't use all of it every year, and some years we do.
Do we have a um, a analysis of of that at hand, just over the course of years? Um, how much is left over, and then some years actually it's utilized?
I'd have to, I can prepare that for you. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I think it'd be helpful in the future, but I appreciate um uh all your assistance on this.
Uh huh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any other comments? All right, I'd like to make a comment. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Buena Ventura.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just going back to what the Vice Mayor was talking about with respect to the rehab program. As I read the staff report, that goes to twelve people. Twelve loans of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, and at times, it hasn't even been, I'm, I'm hearing, been utilized. So that to me is, is it doesn't sound right to me. The, the other issue that I'm deeply disturbed about is knowing that only five percent of the um renters assistance goes to uh the African black population. Uh, that is unacceptable to me, and um there has to be a way that we can capture uh more uh of that population. And um, and so I, I'm concerned about the possible um lack of outreach or um just uh that that five percent number is disturbing. Um, and then when it comes to the discussion about streamlining, um, streamlining could just be, make it process faster. It doesn't ring to me of eliminating the barriers that could exist um to prevent uh people from getting the loan, like the W two requirements or the bank statement requirements. And I know Ms. Baum said that um they're, they're eliminating the bank requirement and or that people apply even without a bank statement. But again, diving deeper, applying doesn't mean much if what they're going to rely on is the fact that you didn't provide a bank statement. So I'm looking for real uh solutions, real hard um uh yes or no requirements that will um allow for um more people who are in uh these communities to get renters assistance. And so, you know, I, I, I sort of agree with, with some of the public comments saying that maybe we should fund the renters assistance to a million dollars rather than seven hundred and fifty, and maybe we can take some of the, the funding from the other CDBG um organizations that we are, are supporting, but only if and only if we can have some kind of mechanism where we can capture more than the five percent that's been stated. And if we can eliminate some of those requirements or restrictions that cause real barriers uh to get these assistance. So that's my thought so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buena Ventura. Were there any other comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, just a short one?
Yes.
It kind of like, doesn't go along with them, but um based on the demographics in our, and the percentages in our community of the different kinds, and I know we're getting ready to do another census. And then a lot of, it's like the people of color and because we live amongst each other. But um it's my understanding that some live in the midway, which would not probably be asking for the rental assistance, but if we could get more numbers as the census roll in, um, I'm sure that we'll be able to get the demographics. So it may not be, uh, the Daly City Partnership may be surveying the percentage, but as we know throughout the past many years, that sadly, that demographic was uh ended up in going to Antioch and other places, which is sad. I mean, that, it's been years, and it's really sad that that percentage has dropped to begin with. But um, I think that being that it's low, but um we want to make sure we're serving all our public as well, but they too. Um, I know that there's been a lot of move, the move to Fairfield, Antioch, and other places. Um, so um, which is over the last twenty-some years. But um because of the changes in the expense of, of housing in our Daly City had gotten so expensive to begin with. And um, I know this through partnerships with uh my work within the churches um that, that has been a real issue that they had to move out of Daly City to begin with. So um, but we'll know more, I guess, when the census come in. But uh to tap in to where, where everybody is, hopefully, everybody will be filling out your census. So thank you very much. Thank you, Betsy. Thank you, Alain Allen and staff. And Ms. Baum, definitely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejivani. All right, any other comments? All right, uh, I'd like to make a comment at this particular time in closing. All right, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for their ideas and their creative thinking. The issue at hand tonight is the appropriation of close to seven hundred thousand dollars to be added to the rental assistance program. Seven hundred thousand dollars is not going to disappear in one or two months. When the time comes that we need to add more, then we can look at this matter to add more. However, as we move from this date forward to address the systemic racism that has been quoted so many times this evening, I urge every single council member on the committees that they serve on, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's CDBG grant fund, to keep this in mind as to how we can uh provide additional outreach. It cannot be done tonight, but it's, it's been brought up, and I think it's a very important topic. And if we're going to address some of the uh things that have happened in the past and we want to correct them, we need to look forward with an idea to do, but the question at hand is seven hundred plus thousand dollars for rental assistance. Uh, to the credit of Ms. Baum, I feel that Daly City Partnership has done the best that they can to provide applications, to provide notice. However, Daly City Partnership has no control as to who applies. You come in, you apply. Uh, what I'm gathering is that perhaps not enough of the African Americans are applying. Well, I, I, I feel that if the information is out there, uh, Daly City Partnership is not discouraging uh anyone from applying, and I hopefully, hopeful that that is the case. Applications are made available to everyone. If there's additional outreach that can be done, I think additional outreach should be for the entire community of Daly City, entire community. So moving forward, please keep these ideas in mind, and with that being said, I'd like to uh, unless there's any further.
I would, I would like to make a motion to approve uh the seven hundred and fifty thousand allocation with the requirement that we have more outreach to the black community and that um we, with also the re, the requirement that we engage in the process of um uh streamline, if you want to use that word, or loosening uh some of these restrictions that I think are prohibitive. Um, and then I would uh also move that the allocation of the CDBG funds be deferred to the next meeting until we have um uh uh come up with a consensus and, and more information with respect to the housing uh rehabilitation program, and whether or not we as a council are supportive of taking some funds away from that or some funds from the other CDBG. So that's my motion.
Second?
All right, we have a fir, we have a, uh, okay, okay, we have a amendment uh to, uh, hold on the nail, hold on, I see, I see you. We have an amendment to the uh motion that is on the floor, and I'll defer it to the city attorney. Uh, can we move on according to Robert's Rules of Order? We have to uh rule on this amendment before we can go to the first, that uh, that's on the floor.
Um, so currently, the motion on the floor does have the amendments, so that's the first motion that's on the floor. Uh, if there were amendments to that, then we would have to take this first before handling the amendments.
Got it. All right, thank you. So there's a motion on the floor and for discussion, and Linnell, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, we are supposed to submit our action plan by August fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so for clarification, if I may, through um the mayor, uh, Linell, when you say we're supposed to submit an action plan, is that in regards to the allocation of funds that we would have to have that plan?
Yes, the action plan identifies how the funds shall be allocated.
Which is the recommendation that has been presented to the council this evening, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so uh for clarifications on Councilmember Benaventura's uh motion, it does have all the outreach, the requirement for streamlining restrictions to the effect as possible. However, the CBGG funding deferral of funds might be problematic if an action plan needs to be submitted by August.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Madam City Attorney. Um, is there any other comments at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just a short one. I, like, I understand what my council fellow council member, Buena Ventura, is trying to say. But being that it's government funds and federal funds, it's my understanding under the law that it has to be allocated to everyone, not just one particular group. Even though we want, we can do more outreach, I agree to, to our community, but I, because it's federal funds, um, it would be my understanding, I don't know, I would defer to the city attorney, that we can't just define one group over another according to the funds. Ever our Latinos and um other ones in our, in our, in our city.
Um, um, I'd have to agree with Councilmember Dejivani with saying outreach specifically to the black community. Fair housing practices saying you cannot uh pertain to a certain group. Basically, this would be the reversed of something, a term called redlining.
Yes.
But applying it to only one specific ethnic race, I believe, is against the fair housing practices of the United States.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other comments?
Um, the funds would be available to everyone who meets the requirements regardless of race. But we um had encourages also to do affirmative marketing, so we could affirmatively market to different populations that don't necessarily apply. So we could do affirmative marketing, and so do outreach to different communities.
Right, but not just one community.
That's an, that's an excellent, uh, an excellent idea. So um I'll defer to Mr. Buena Ventura if you want to modify.
No. I don't modify my motion. I, I, I stand with the motion. I think it's proper. We, we, um, we're not designating who it goes to. It's just outreach to the black community. I don't see. I don't see a problem with that. And so, I'm not modifying my motion. I stand with my motion as raised.
All right, Vice Mayor, do you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, with Linnell also stating there could be affirmative marketing. I also am in agreement that there could be a mechanism to be able to ensure that we do outreach to the Black community within Daily City.
Okay, thank you. Any other further comments?
And this doesn't, and I'd like to say a comment that, and you know, this doesn't mean that, okay, there, you know, we're not serving all. I think, you know, at this juncture, really, Black Lives Matter movement is around exactly what was mentioned earlier about, you know, systemically, how can we be able to be proactive to, you know, support the Black community who, you know, it, it, even in government, right? In all different forms of government. And so, for me, hearing there could be affirmative marketing and, and I think that's where I'm at. But I just wanted to be clear, you know, to the community out there. You know, that this is not necessarily where you're excluding, you know, I'm saying excluding others. This is, you know, around the matter of focusing on a community that has been suffering for over 400 years, right? And so, if we're looking at ways in which to ensure that, you know, with there, there is outreach. I mean, this is not gonna, no, this is one small thing that we're, we're trying to do. But we're looking at all that different aspects in which we can support this movement. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Councilmember Rod. Let him go. Go ahead. I defer to you first.
It's all right, Linnell. I agree with Vice Mayor and Council, Councilmember Ray Benaventura. We're not saying it's designated to a specific population. It's just according to outreach. I think when we, we deal with federal funding and the barriers to access, that's the main question is accessibility. How can we create access to groups that have been historically marginalized and provide mechanisms, just like what the Vice Mayor was saying, of, of promoting to populations that have been systemic, traditionally marginalized or oppressed from obtaining these funds? And I think that's, that's one way of, of understanding how to get access to these, these funds and resources because those are key, making them culturally relevant and responsive to the needs of these, of these communities. So, I support Mr. Benaventura's motion. And go ahead, Councilwoman Dejavani. Pass the mic to you.
Thank you. I just want on historic content, which you guys already are familiar with, that, that this is a no way, I remember when they actually saw photos for, in Daily City, that Blacks could not buy houses, but nor could Asians. Asians were definitely also denied the right to purchase a home here in our own Daily City. So, definitely don't want to diminish because especially during these times, and they have not even caught up our Black Lives Matter. But if the affirmative action outreach includes as that population as well, because in historic content, I actually, when you look at Daily City, it's even hard to believe. But even those of you on our council, your fellow, like the Filipinos and the Chinese, they were denied even being able to purchase homes. So, we want to make sure if it includes others, then that, then I would agree with that. But we need to look at historic content as well, that that population, I saw the signs in the black and white photos. And pretty disturbing, but met some of the families that were denied buying homes to begin with. And even the Japanese with the internment camps, when other people had to put them in their own, other people's names to own a home. So, but thank you, Dr. Rod. Appreciate it. Thank you. Mayor.
All right, thank you, everyone. The way I am looking at this is basically a literal, specific motion. It is not subject to interpretation, but it's a literal statement as to what we shall do on this motion. So, that being said, I'm asking to call the question and to provide us a literal motion that we will be voting on.
I think, I think I've made the motion clear. And if you want literally, I'll defer to the city attorney so that she can legalize, if you will, exactly what I said in the motion.
Please, Madam City Attorney, if you can.
I have some points of clarification. I mean, I jotted notes, Councilmember Benaventura. The one I have in particular is in regards to the deferral of the CBBG funding. Um, can you clarify what you mean by that? Because my only concern is that this is an action plan that needs to be submitted.
Let me defer that motion for now with the CBBG. Let's just vote on the 750,000, the first motion that I made.
Okay. So, my understanding in regards to the allocation and the hot is that the motion pertains to outreach and to specific communities, particularly the Black community, in regards to also streamlining the process for access to these funds and access to the rental housing. Clarification from staff is that we are allowed to do some affirmative marketing as it pertains to particular groups that may be needed accessibility to this funding source.
Yes.
The main point is really in regards to the outreach to the particular communities.
Yes, that's, you stated exactly what I intended, what I've said.
Okay. And then in regards to the CBBG funding deferral, we're deferring that at this point. Is that correct, Councilmember?
Let me, let me ask some follow-up questions on the deferral and the time period. If, maybe Linnell or Miss Martin. So, does the fact that we have an action plan committed to these various groups satisfy the government requirement? Or do we need to specify the amounts to also satisfy the government requirement in terms of the deadline? Or can we just decide which groups these ones are going to for now? And not necessarily agree on the amount?
Linnell, you're on mute. I'm gonna let you interact as soon as I'm, my understanding is that, that council does have to vote on the amount tonight. And if it's due, it's 15, the council would need to take action tonight on a ma, on the amount. But Linnell, let me know if I'm incorrect on that.
Um, yeah, so we need to submit the action plan and the action plan needs to specify what activities we will be funding with our CBBG.
Okay. And then the date of what you need to submit it for what week?
August 15th.
Okay. And we, did we decide we weren't going to have a meeting in August? Do we have any upcoming meetings that are not general agenda meetings?
No, not of, not as of today.
Do you anticipate doing any before the August 15th?
I do not.
As far as what information you can share with us today with respect to some of the questions the Vice Mayor asked about the, the the amounts not being utilized at every allocation. Is it, when you say it's not utilized roughly, and I won't hold you to the figures, but roughly, can you give me, I don't know, what, what the lowest amount has been not utilized or what the highest amount has not utilized, that sort of thing?
Betsy, did you want to take that?
Um, yeah. I can make an estimate that we have total allocations for housing rehab that vary between, I think about 350,000 and 600,000, like say, over the last five years. And the reason they go as high as 600,000 is because demand is high and we, we've come back to the council and asked to allocate more money. We've had years when we never commit more than we have. And since loan requests are usually between 50 and 75,000 dollars, we sometimes have maybe 50,000 left over. And some years, we have as much as 200,000 left over. And sometimes we have loans that are all ready to execute on June 25th, but we have a technicality, so we don't execute them. And that results in 200,000 dollars being left on, maybe 100,000 being left on the table. And then we execute it at the beginning of the next fiscal year. So, I'm going to say that the surplus funds vary between 50,000 and 200,000.
Is there a mechanism by which we can take any surplus and allocate it to, I don't know, another, let's say, another project that we as a council come up with before the rollout of the next CDBG funded?
Well, the next, any, any funds that are not spent out of any program roll back to the program. And they're, and then they roll back and they're reprogrammed the following year. So, we don't lose the money. It just goes into unallocated and it rolls forward. And you, you get the chance to allocate it in the next, in the next cycle. You can midway through the year, if you see that funds are not being utilized, you can do a significant amendment to your action plan at any time and reprogram funding. That requires, that requires a 30-day public notice. So, for example, if you approved the action plan as it is now drafted and you saw in October or November that the rehab funds were not being utilized, you could agendaize an amendment to the action plan and transfer funding to another purpose at that point.
I think.
You can increase, you can increase funding or decrease funding to any activity at any time in the fiscal year, provided that you do the proper noticing.
I, I think I might be okay with that. What do you say, the rest of the council? This is Madam Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that too. And also gives us, yeah, the opportunity to be able to amend if needed, if it's not being utilized, if not, yeah, so.
So, then I would withdraw the second motion that I made. Or do I need, Madam City Attorney, do I need to state the language that Betsy just said to be able to get back some of that funding? Or that's just known in the matter of law? I don't need to include the language?
Councilmember, for purposes of clarification, it's probably best, I mean, I, I know what you mean in terms of you withdraw the second half of the motion for the CBBG funding. But it's understanding that you, and I'll, I'll attempt to recreate it through the chair. My understanding is that you would adopt the resolution and the allocation with, with the amendment that you would like to include affirmative marketing as it pertains to outreach to groups, in particular, the Black Lives Matter movement and groups that would need access. And it's, at that point, you would also entertain the motion to request that the staff consider looking at streamlining the process for access to these funding sources.
Right. Then the second motion.
The other part about the CBBG funding deferral has been withdrawn at this point. And, and with the understanding that the council does have the option to reopen and reallocate the funding sources at a later time once the action plan has already been provided to the, to the feds.
Okay, that's my motion.
That's the motion.
Finally, I would like to make a comment. And my comment is, this is what I had mentioned before. But as we move forward, for all the folks on the specific committees, and when it comes to council as an agenda item for approval, that especially in the area of CBBG grant funds and rehabilitation, that we as a council can reallocate those funds as an action item. So, in that particular case, now that there's better clarification amongst everyone, I, I would like to move forward. Councilmember Dejavani, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick one. Councilmember, Mr. Benaventura, would you consider, even though the Black Lives Matter is a group, which I respect, you know, like, that's what you were meaning. But we have elders in our community that are not members, that may be Black, that are not members of that specific group. So, would it be able to say the Black, the Blacks in our community? Would you feel comfortable with saying that? Because a lot of them, the elders, are not members of that particular group.
Let me, let me explain again, and I'm not going to take too much time. I heard 5% of Black lives being affected by this. This, and I've, and I said it when, when we were voting on the Black Lives Matter resolution. I respect what, what everybody's opinion about when they say all lives matter, okay? But what I'm specifically addressing in my resolution is the effect on Black lives. And I do not want to dilute the message and what the intent is of what I'm trying to do with respect to ending systemic racism and disenfranchising. So, I stand with my motion. I respect everyone's opinion about the issues at hand, but that, that's what, that's my intention. And so, I'm, I'm staying with the motion I made.
So, what you're saying is you're not just saying one group, you're just including all the Blacks in our community, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, not just one group in particular. Thank you for clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Benaventura.
Any further comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just want to also provide clarification. So, Councilman Dejavani, when we're talking about Black Lives Matter, it's more than a group, it's a movement. So, just to reinforce Councilmember Ray Benaventura's comments, it's not targeting, we're, we're just putting into context history and the history of marginalization. We're not really talking about like, they have to be a member of a group because Black Lives Matter is not a group. It's a movement. It's a transgenerational movement. When we talk about elders, they're also included as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. But isn't it, I thought it was an official group.
Um, if you look at their principle, more of a decentralized organization that is looking at institutions that have historically the issues of Black lives.
Right.
Specifically, it's not like, oh, I pledge to be a membership. It's not like joining the Boy Scouts or something like that. It's like these ideologies and you share these principles. And it's, it's a movement to address systemic racism.
Just including all, all of them. Because some of the elders that go to the churches, yeah, you're right. They don't specifically belong to the, the group itself. Because there's a founder, I'm familiar with the founder of the, of that, with the Brothers Keeper and all them. So, thank you very much. Thanks for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Rod. So thank you very much. Thanks for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Rod.
All right. Um, are there any further comments? Madam City Attorney, would you kindly call the question, please? Provide the language.
I would. Um, I'll try. So through the chair, I believe there's a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution of the HUD consolidation one-year action plan with the friendly amendment to include outreach and streamlining restrictions and processes to create greater access in furtherance of the black community in support of all, commute, commute, all, all communities with regards to access to these home and funding sources. It's under, it's our understanding that this friendly amendment stems from the Black Lives Matter movement, but stems in outreach is to those communities to have greater access. It's also part of the motion that the council understands that the one-year action plan is to be adopted this evening with the understanding that in the event that the council would like to, uh, review and reallocate funding sources, that they may do so in another public hearing subsequent to this date.
Don't forget the streamlining and
Oh, yes, and also streamlining the processes and restrictions for greater access to these funds for the, um, black community as well as other communities that may be marginalized.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
As a motion.
Thank you. And, uh, yes, go ahead.
And, uh, my second stands with the, uh, friendly amendments to the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion at this time? On the motion, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Dee Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. Moving on to communications, item number three. Resolution to authorize placement of a local recovery and relief transactions and use tax ordinance on the ballot for the November third, twenty twenty election. I turn it over to Madam City Attorney, Ms. Maltby.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, good evening. It's nice to see, to see everybody here on Zoom. Tonight, it is recommended that the city council review and consider the attached, uh, transactions and use tax ordinance and resolution placing the ordinance on the ballot for the November third, twenty twenty election. By way of background, um, as you may know, I think you know, the city has been facing ongoing fiscal challenges dating back to the Great Recession of two thousand eight and two thousand nine. Each fiscal year since that time, reductions have been made in staffing levels across all city departments and operations and significant reductions have been made in direct services to the public and departmental operations. And, um, in the fiscal year twenty eighteen and nineteen and nineteen twenty, the general fund operating budget included a ten point six million transfer from the general fund reserve to cover anticipated budget shortfalls. And consequently, the city council directed staff to examine new sources of revenues and increase, including an increase to the business license tax rate, the TOT, which is the transient occupant, occupancy tax, as well as the adoption of a tax on cannabis businesses. Um, and each of those passed overwhelmingly in the November twenty eighteen election. And while revenues have increased modest, modest, modestly as a result of those tax measures, expenses continue to rise. Um, and as we've heard already throughout the night, uh, the impacts of the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic, those impacts on revenues are anticipated and are still remain to be seen and fully appreciated. Uh, the second half of fiscal year nineteen twenty presented many, many unanticipated fiscal challenges due to the pandemic. As you recall, um, the city council meeting on July thirteenth, twenty twenty, the city, uh, presentation showed a structural deficit impacted by this current recession and other impacts. Um, and that updated bud, budget forecast shows a decline in general fund reserves and a new fiscal, uh, gap that will erode sixteen million in revenues through twenty-three, twenty-four. So in addition to the administrative actions that we've already taken to date, such as the city council uh, already approving a rollover of the twenty twenty-one budget, which was, in my opinion and staff's opinion, the right thing to do and in implementing a hiring freeze of non-mission critical positions, deferring non-urgent capital improvement projects and, uh, furloughing, unfortunately, furloughing seasonal recreation staff. The city still does have fiscal realities that we need to address. The need for, uh, staff to continue to focus on fiscal sustainability strategies is necessary. It's still necessary to maintain service levels, given this uncertain economy and the significant reduction to major revenue sources that we're currently facing. Um, in a recently completed professional community survey, sixty-six percent of respondents did feel that the city, um, had a need for additional funding to provide the level of city services that residents want and need. And as much as seventy-five percent of respondents indicated that they was, they would support a simple majority requirement, relief and recovery measure. We very much appreciate the community's feedback, uh, through the join conversation, community engagement survey on their local recovery and relief priorities during these incredibly trying times. To date, we've received hundreds of responses from the community and thank you so much to our community. The city council's action tonight is to allow the voters the opportunity to decide on their own local recovery and accountability path forward. Attached to your staff.
Uh, looks like you're frozen, Shawna.
Can you hear me? Am I back?
Uh, yes. Uh, last that I got from you, attached to your staff report.
Okay, great. I only froze for a tiny minute. It wasn't nerves, I promise. Uh, attached is the staff report is a resolution placing the recommended transactions and use tax ordinance on the November third, twenty twenty ballot. Also is a tax ordinance that would be presented to the voters for their consideration. Uh, if, if enacted, this would increase the overall sales tax in Daly City to nine point seven five percent. Other cities in San Mateo County that have imposed this additional one-half cent sales tax include Belmont, East Palo Alto, Redwood City, San Bruno and South San Francisco. The attached resolution accomplishes several actions that are included on page three of the staff report. I won't go into detail. If you do have questions, I, we did give this to council and to public in advance, but if there are questions, we can certainly ask those at the end of the staff report. But, uh, for the community's information, the, uh, the resolution authorizes this question. Sorry, someone, can you hear me?
I muted someone that had background noise, Shawna, so.
Okay. So the resolution authorizes the question to be presented to the voters as follows, and this is just verbatim in the staff report for the community's benefit. Daly City's local recovery and relief measure to provide emergency funding that cannot be taken by the state, maintaining the city's long-term financial stability, city services such as supporting local businesses, preventing, addressing homelessness, maintaining paramedic, fire and nine-one-one emergency response, senior services, preparing for natural disaster and public health emergencies. Shall the, and it asks, shall the measure establishing a one-half cent sales tax, providing approximately six million until ended by voters and requiring independent audits and public oversight be adopted? Council should recognize that there are several rules that govern the form of this question. First, the question may not contain more than seventy-five words and there are various rules that govern the counting of words. For example, the phrase, city of Daly City counts as one word. Uh, other details related to the placing of the ballot measure or the ballot question are included, uh, in detail on pages four and five of the staff report. The fiscal impact, if the city council moves forward with the transactions and use tax ordinance for the November third, twenty twenty ballot, the proposed tax increase of one-half cent will generate approximately six million dollars in additional annual revenue to the city of Daly City. The election to place this on the ballot is estimated to cost thirty thousand dollars and has been included within the fiscal year twenty twenty-one adopted budget. So in summary and conclusion, due to an ongoing budgetary deficit, the city has faced significant service and program reductions resulting in the elimination of positions across every department. The city council should review and consider the proposed transactions and use tax ordinance as one of many continual steps the city can take to begin to provide some stability to city services and programs that have been eliminated over the years. Should the city council desire to move ahead with the proposed transactions and use tax ordinance, the city council should adopt the attached resolution and ordinance. Finally, because this is a general tax, government code five-three-seven-two-four-B requires the resolution to be adopted by a two-thirds vote of all the members of the legislative body, which means that four of the five members of city council must vote to adopt the resolution in order to place the measure on the ballot. Thank you for listening to that long-winded staff report, but an important one, and I am available, as is the city attorney, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Maltby. Uh, very important one. Okay, I'd like to open it up for, uh, comments, please.
Mr. Mayor? May I?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Um, and thank you for that presentation, Ms. Maltby, and for the update with, regarding that. Um, and I, I have my comment and I, I do have one question. You know, I know, uh, community out there are suffering through job loss and furloughs, but I, I think by adding this tax relief, it's to ensure the foundational services are intact for our community. You know, our local economy has been impacted by COVID nineteen, which is a serious issue. And this is one approach among a more comprehensive to sustain and maintain the services that, you know, our community relies on, right? Such as public safety, emergency health services, senior service, youth development support, looking at, uh, ways to, for affordable housing opportunities. It's really to create, um, and sustain what we need to do for our city government. I think the importance of supporting the local recovery and tax, uh, relief is extremely important. And, and I think it's something that, uh, I think it's one of the ways we can combat, um, you know, what we're looking at head within our city budget. And so, um, I think, um, from hearing from the study that was, that has transpired and it's a recent study that was done. I think, you know, for me, hearing that it was just recently, um, done and I believe, um, Ms. Maltby, you mentioned it was, uh, sometime in July? Was it?
The
In June or July?
The polling concluded July twelfth of this year.
Yeah, so thank you very much. And hearing that, that it was just recently, July twelve, when, um, there was a, a analysis and assessment, I feel comfortable in supporting an initiative like this on, uh, the ballot. The one question I do have is around the six million dollars. What was the calculation on that? Give, is it, um, you know, more of, uh, the calculation on in a usual year? Did it take in, in consideration? You know, we're in COVID nineteen. I, so I just want to, I guess for me, it'd be helpful to understand how we analyze the six million dollar, um, amount.
Um, I, it, we used an average, uh, of the last few years that we have, um, projected revenues and the actuals. However, Mr. Hi, if you're online, if you wanted to add anything to my answer, I would appreciate that. But it was a, a good faith estimate based on averages. And it doesn't necessarily consider the revenue hits that we may be facing as a result of the pandemic. Um, so, um, we, we may not reach that six million the first fiscal year or even the second fiscal year as we recover.
Right, yes, the, we used an average because we do average, uh, in the, uh, years like fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, we were around twelve million dollars per year and that's the one percent base sales tax Bradley Burns. So an extra half cent would basically be six million on a regular run rate.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. I just, uh, wanted to know, um, how we calculated that. I think also for our community members that are watching, um, in, on TV or online, if we think about the sales tax, sales tax, you know, it's not only within the residence, it's also, if you think of, actually, a lot of people shop in our city. If you think about it, um, at Ceremone, and so it's not necessarily just on the residence, but it's actually going to be, uh, more comprehensive and will kind of, um, you know, reach a, a larger, uh, group of people in regards to, um, the, the assistance from our, our neighboring cities that actually shop, uh, from San Francisco, that shop from Pacifica and other areas around us. So, um, I'm in full support of this, um, to ensure that our, our, our budget, you know, to support our budget moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Mayor, may I?
Sure.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you, Ms. Maltby, and to the managing partners. And it's really good to hear and thank you to the community that responded. As, uh, seeing the results meant how much you really are in tune and how much you care about your, your public safety and how much you care about the quality of life that we've been able to try to keep sustain our services. And now, um, it appears also in the results that you are COVID sensitive to the fact of being concerned about our financial stability and that you know that we are taking action and that you have given us more confidence and that it was done. We were talking about this prior to COVID, um, which is great for, so you guys would know, looking for more ways to bring in more revenues, thinking outside the box and trying to figure this out. Uh, the sales tax, um, was definitely the one to make sure that it wasn't something that would hit our residents hard or ask too much of them, because everybody else is having their own struggles, especially during the, now, the COVID. And then when they went back into the recent one, as the, uh, Vice Mayor had spoken, uh, the results were very close. And, uh, so that really gives the confidence to say, you know that, um, when that language is in there, we reiterate, the state cannot take this money. So this is with the, when the words are in there in that measure, that you know they cannot take this money. And so we were, are able to use it for what you put in the input to our community. It was you that decided how we're going to make this and how we're going to, uh, make it work and what we're going to do with our money. So, um, that's the most important thing that you guys, that our community has the input. So, um, the city manager, I'm in full support, the half cent, it will bring us up to our neighbors because we are currently below our neighbors, San Bruno, SL City and other cities, but mostly around us. So when they come and shop, that we're not even above them, we're going to be equal to. So, um, that's, the timing of it is, uh, perfect as far as getting this on the ballot. And that's a half cent and not all put on the backs of our residents and those who are currently, we know that the COVID, we don't know what's going to happen at that time. And thank you, Mr. Hi, for, for what you did concerning this and that it is a percentage and it may be a little lower for the next couple of years and, you know, but at least we're moving forward. And so that people know we want to maintain our services, we want to make sure when you call nine-one-one or the paramedics, that, that you're going to have the, somebody's going to be there for you. So, and we need that sustainability in our budget. And, um, so I'm in, in full support of the half cent. And, um, and thank the community for expressing through this polling that you are in support as well. And thank the community for expressing through this polling that you are in support as well. And I think Mr. Stolti also helped in this. So thank you, Mr. Stolti, and no matter the staff was that Shauna had around her, that I really appreciate it. So definitely a full support. And as we move forward through the COVID, we will keep in check, and we always reach out to our community. As you saw, the mailer that also went out from our city manager, she did an outreach as well to see what your priorities are, and if need be to do it ever again. And she really wants to make sure that we stay in check with our community. So I really thought that that was a good, great idea, and that a lot more people respond by, especially our seniors, and those that are not able to get on the Zoom, were able to relate and get those answers back to you, city manager. And you were very appreciative, which I like that. And we are all appreciative that that was done. So thank you very much, and stand in full support and ready to get this moving as we move forward to for our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'm so sorry. I, this slipped my mind, and if I may, I was just wondering if I could ask the city manager a couple more questions, if I may?
Please do.
Thank you so much. Earlier on your presentation, you did mention that, you know, potentially, this could be utilized for services that were lost in previous years. And so I know that obviously we have to meet the deficits, the deficits that may lie ahead of us, but will this, could this sales tax be utilized to reinstate some of the services such as Engine 95 in the future? Or even our library services that have been cut? So I, you know, that, you know, so because you did message earlier that, you know, to, you know, for also services that may have been cut in the past.
Yeah, great question. And we get that question a lot, actually, so I appreciate that. So because the council did roll over this budget, the next round of budgets, study sessions and budget hearings would start in spring of 2021. And at that time, regardless if the sales tax goes on the ballot or passes, the council does have the opportunity in early spring of next year to determine, based on revenue sources, what we could reinstate, and that could include things like Engine 95 and libraries and police and, you know, any, anything else that was cut along the way, the council would vote on budget allocation for those, for those services. That is correct. This is a general sales tax, meaning that it's not earmarked for any one thing.
Thank you so much for that clarification. It's very helpful around just being able to envision ahead and see what, where we'll be in the future and what can be the potential possibilities. So thank you so much for that.
Are there any other comments?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to staff for working hard and the consultants in making this happen, especially, I mean, we initially just thought of it in terms of bringing back service that we lost in 2008, 2009 during the Great Recession, and it's crazy that 10 years later, we're in this predicament now. But I, I have a quick question. I was looking at the, some of the language terms of place of sale. If somebody could give more clarification on that, like for me, my question would be like, because a lot of people are going towards online shopping and delivery, would that cap, would that net, that tax be applied to those mechanisms?
I am going to have to defer to our city attorney on point of sale. Do you mind, Rose, chiming in on point of sale?
I do my best, but I will also probably supplement that with our finance director, Mr. Hi, as well. So online shopping, as you may know, is tricky. It does have its, it's where point of sale ends up. So my best response, to the extent that the point of sale ends in Daly City, meaning online shopping ends up here, gets delivered here, then yes, the sales tax is Daly City. Now, there's all those things about being a hybrid, you know, where you only get a percentage where you have the car sales. It all, and it is a gray area, but when the predominant part of the transaction, meaning the point of sales, ends in Daly City, happens in Daly City, then it is in Daly City. That's the best answer I can give you. And I don't know what that estimate is. I would defer to the finance director if they do have any data or information as it pertains to online sales.
In the most recent quarter, we received about $160,000 of sales tax from the Amazons and other internet-type providers. So it's not a huge, it's not a huge part of our, our base, because it is accumulated across the county, and it's depending on how our, how our total sales tax is to the county sales tax, the percentage will go up or down. We were actually, we were actually running about 7% of the total for the county in the pool. So that, you know, is, is 7 and 1/2%, so it's, it's definitely, you know, growing, it has been growing because the base has grown, but it's still not the predominant part. It's primarily, you know, the, the brick and mortar, the grocery stores and other direct sales tax collection, and then remittance to the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I have a few, if I may. Mr. Hi, or Shauna, would you kindly enlighten the public as to our current sales tax rate, which I believe is 9.25%? And the only reason why I'm asking this is so that the public gets an idea as to what we have been having to deal with lately. So out of the 9.25% tax that they pay, how much does Daly City get of that?
We get, we get 1% on base, actually, the county gets the 5% administration fee, so we get 0.95 of 1%.
Outstanding. And where does the other percentage go? Is it my understanding it goes to the state?
Yeah, the state, the state gets 7 and a, and a quarter percent between all its different components. Then there's also a point, about a point and a half that goes to the Measure A and Measure W, the sales tax on gas, that funds SAM Trans and other projects in the county. And then another half, I think there's another half percent that's other local county-type measures.
Thank you, Mr. Hi. So it's my understanding at 0.95%, Daly City has had to make do with that only 0.95% over the years.
Right, last year, last year, we were at a little over 14 million in total sales tax. Everything was, you know, restaurants, retail, transportation, you know, people with all the cars on the road prior to the COVID, you know, sales tax or the gas taxes were all, you know, at record levels. So we're definitely, you know, we've trended downwards and thinking 12 million will be where we end up hopefully in 2020 here on sales tax.
Thank you. Addressing the issue about points of sale. So there's two aspects to point of sale. One is where the sale originates. Say, for instance, somebody has a storefront in the city of Daly City. However, they're shipping to New York. So I'm starting on the point of sale where it starts. Will we get something if it originated in Daly City?
You know, I'm not 100% sure on how, I'm not clear on if there are shippers in Daly City that ship out. I think, you know, our, our tax base is primarily the retail stores that we see. We don't, I don't think we have a, you know, we don't have an Amazon-type order processor in Daly City. So I would think that the likelihood of something like that would be relatively small.
Agreed. Thank you for that clarification, which leads me to the second part, where the sale ends. Like if you're in New York and you're shipping to Daly City, it's my understanding that you have to pay applicable sales tax based upon the end destination. Is that correct?
Well, no, I think that's, that's part of the county pool where people that, you know, in entities that, that charge sales tax, they charge basically the county rate, and then it's a portion to the pool because they don't really have the capabilities of aggregate, or disaggregating all their sales to a county, and then apportioning it, you know, city by city. That would be, when you think of a company like Amazon, that would be a huge undertaking to try to allocate, say in San Mateo County, 13, 13 or 14 different jurisdictions for sales tax. So that is, is the county pool is the best, best option for them. And so we would get, you know, the base, kind of the base rate, so we wouldn't get the extra half a percent, but we would be getting some sales tax.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I would hope that later on, legislation can become more specific, but this particular measure is an additional 0.5 or a half cent sales tax that does not take into account nothing's going to the county, nothing's going to the state, it's all coming to Daly City. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I can recall before, earlier, most folks would shop on eBay specifically because they didn't have to pay that sales tax. But now Amazon and eBay are now charging sales tax. It's good to know that, at least we know where it's going, and it's going to the county. Okay, and lastly, I would like to make mention to the voters out there that we're, we're trying our best to restore our services. And as we're going to hear from a few public comments that we're about to hear, one of those services that has been sorely needed, and that is the restoring of our fire services, Engine 95, and of course, our libraries. So unless there are any further comments at this time, I know we have a few comments, and I'd like to open it up to public hearing. Do you have any other comments at this time? Okay, great. Mr. Stolti, I'll give you the floor.
Okay. Our first comment is from Victoria Magbelang, and it says, Dear Mayor Sylvester, Vice Mayor Manalo, and Councilmembers, I'm writing to urge you to please vote to put the resolution to authorize placement of a local recovery and relief transactions and use or sales tax ordinance on the ballot for the November 3rd, 2020 election. As you know, Daly City is facing a serious financial crisis, and these funds would go a long way toward enabling us to keep our Daly City Public Libraries, among other very important city services, open and operating to the best of their abilities. As Executive Director of the Daly City Public Library Associates, I often hear from citizens that are having our library branches open for such limited hours creates an undue hardship. Without these additional funds secured, I am seriously concerned about the city's ability to adequately support our community, many of whom are dependent upon our public libraries for essential services. Times like these require that we all come together as a community to work toward the common good, and I feel strongly that this tax ordinance would greatly benefit us all. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Victoria Magbelang, Executive Director of DCPL Play. The next comment is from County Supervisor David Canap. Dear Mayor Sylvester and Honorable City Council Members, I am writing to express my strong support for placing a half-cent sales tax on the November ballot to enhance public safety and disaster planning. The tax will enhance paramedic services with new equipment, maintain local fire protection, and maintain Daly City's long-term financial stability as the COVID-19 pandemic decimates the economy. This tax will assist our seniors and most vulnerable residents most impacted by this public health crisis. It will support local businesses and preserve local jobs. As you know, the city cannot rely on financial assistance from either the state or federal governments currently, and must let the residents of Daly City vote on this critical ballot measure. It will also help maintain and enhance 911 response times and help to ensure that public spaces are clean, healthy, and safe for all of our residents to enjoy. Many of our residents or families in transition during, during this crisis will heavily rely on the city and the services it provides for support. We must be ready for any emergency, which is more critical now than ever. Thank you for considering my comments, and again, I urge you to place the half-cent sales tax on the November ballot so the residents of Daly City can vote on this very important funding measure. In friendship, David J. Canapa, San Mateo County Supervisor. The next comment is Antisia. Dear Mayor Sylvester and members of the city council, I am writing you today to encourage you to support the half-cent sales tax that is being proposed for the November ballot. Maintaining financial security is paramount to providing necessary services our community needs and deserves. The pandemic we are in is making it even harder to maintain fiscal solvency for so many cities and counties. Passing this measure would put us on a path to financial security and would allow the council to revisit areas of services that are, that unfortunately had to be dramatically reduced due to past budget constraints to the dismay of the residents of our great city. They include library services, recreation services, and senior services, to name a few, all vital for a healthy community. It is important for the council to put this measure on the ballot, but it is also equally important that I and other residents do our part to support this measure as things can't turn around as we'd all like to see if we aren't all in this together. Thank you for your great service and appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on this matter. All the best. Adrian J. T.C.A. Next comment is from Angela Legarta. Dear City Council Members, I am writing to support placing a sales tax increase measure on this November's ballot, resolution to authorize placement of a local recovery and relief transaction and use sales tax ordinance on the ballot for the November 3rd, 2020 election. This would increase revenues to assist city services. As the President of the Daly City Library Board of Trustees, my ask is for better funding for the libraries in Daly City. Especially in these unprecedented times, the library services are so important to the community, from storytime, virtual activities, tutoring to help, tutoring to helping seniors. The staff is even more critical to the students of our city as they navigate with shelter in place and distance learning. As the pandemic continues, the libraries are so valuable with the curbside book checkout and strides to keep the libraries running. We are constantly hearing from the library staff that patrons complain about inconsistent hours of operation. I fully support placing the measure on the ballot in hopes that we can staff our branches appropriately and eventually offer more hours at all four branches. Thank you for your kind consideration. Very best, Angela Legarta. The next is from Susan Brissette Smith. I am writing in support of placing a sales tax increase measure on this November's ballot in an effort to increase revenues to bolster city services. As one of the founders of the Daly City Public Library Associates, my bias would naturally be to encourage better funding for the libraries in Daly City. I recognize that some of the council members have served on the Library Board of Trustees, so you are aware of how important this resource is to the community, from babies and storytime to seniors. The staff are even more critical to the students of our city as they grapple with long-distance learning. The libraries offer important services, including tutoring. As the pandemic continues and the libraries are so valuable with the curbside book checkout, the various virtual programs for youth and families, so I support placing the measure on the ballot with the hope that the council will reinstate some of the cuts that have been, have-- So I support placing the measure on the ballot with the hope that the council will reinstate some of the cuts that have taken place over the hard times. Thank you for listening, Susan Brissette Smith. The next is from Nicholas Doyle. To Mayor Sylvester, Vice Mayor Manalo, Council Members, City Manager Malpe, and the citizens of Daly City. In 2016, the City Council and the citizens of Daly City were faced with the tough decision to close down Engine 95 housed at Lincoln and Ed Schott. This was due to a budget shortfall. This decision left the residents in this district and the firefighters across the city in a less-than-desirable situation. The risks that firefighters endure are constant and dynamic. Every time we lose staffing, it amplifies these risks. Despite this staffing and capacity shortfall, the Fire Department has continued to provide quality service responding to both emergency and non-emergency calls to the best of our ability. In the time Engine 95 has been closed, Daly City citizens have been paying the least amount for fire protection among all cities in San Mateo County. If Engine 95 were to reopen, the citizens would only experience a minimal increase to the cost for fire protection and would still be paying some of the lowest rates for fire protection in San Mateo County. In addition to this, our staffing levels had already suffered decreases over the years. Restoring Engine 95 will help bring safety and service back to a more appropriate level for our community and firefighters. Over the four years while Engine 95 has been closed, the Daly City firefighters have been overloaded due to reduced staffing. There has been an increased volume in emergency responses, a reduction of training, coverage issues for the rest of the city, and adjustments to procedures in order to provide adequate protection, all due to Engine 95 being cut. This not only affects District 95 response times, but also impacts the surrounding districts in the city. With no water pumper in the district, it causes a delay for fire protection. The prevalent philosophy in the firefighting world is that the sooner we get water on the fire, the sooner we solve all the other problems at a fire scene. An increase in staffing could assist with our rescue or prevent the extension of fire to other buildings. There have been many fire calls in District 95 over the last four years. All of them would have benefited from a pumper responding from that station. Restoring Engine 95 will have a great impact in overall safety for the citizens of Daly City and its firefighters. The Daly City Firefighters Association supports all City Council members and the City Manager in working to correct the current situation. We owe it to the citizens of Daly City to provide a high-quality level of service for both fire protection and emergency medical care in the community. We not only work in the city, but live in the city also and care to make the community the best for all. Thank you. Nick Doyle, President, Daly City Firefighters Association. Next comment is from Thomas Norris. Honorable Mayor and City Council, I hope this message finds you, finds you, city staff, and all your families well. I would like to take this opportunity to encourage you to move forward with the placing on the November ballot of a measure that would create a half-cent sales tax for the benefit of the citizens of our community. I believe such a measure would help ensure the financial stability of our city going forward and allow us to continue to provide the necessary services we all need. Kind regards, Tom Norris. The next is from Teresa Peronio. Dear Mayor Sylvester and members of the City Council, I am writing today to encourage each of you to support the half-cent sales tax that is being proposed for the upcoming November ballot. I sincerely feel that passing this measure would greatly assist our city with much-needed revenue. Once taken care of the most pressing needs of the city, it is my hope that it would also allow the council to revisit areas of service that have been hard-hit with budget cuts. When working on the budget, please remember our library, parks, recreation, and senior services. As a resident and supporter of our city, I sincerely appreciate this opportunity to voice my concerns and ask for your support in supporting this half-cent sales tax for the upcoming November ballot. Thank you for your dedicated services to the residents of Daly City. Sincerely, Teresa Peronio. And that was the final comment.
Thank you, Mr. Stolty. All right. I, we've heard some of the comments. I'll close the public hearing at this time. Comment period. And I'd like to entertain any additional comments from my colleague before we take the vote.
Mayor, just a quick one. Thank you. I'll just make a really quick, it's just an echo, as you heard, just now, the public comment between that and the survey and reaching out at a community together and our Engine 95, our public safety is a big one with the paramedics, and this is indeed COVID-19. I think that's one of the catastrophes that we're talking about and that we are still right in the middle of it. So the people, the voice to their concerns and their support for this half cent. And I look forward that we can hopefully restore, a lot of the services have been cut and give the citizens and our community what they deserve and our employees as well. They also need our support to make sure that they know that, that the staffing level and their jobs, that we can be a whole community together and appreciate our community, appreciate our staff and everyone and my colleagues. So thank, but thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, and like to turn it back over to you and support this half-cent sales tax with our community in mind.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. Do we have any more further comments? All right. Hearing none, I'd like to move forward. In adopting the resolution, item number three, may I have a roll call, please?
We have a second on the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I guess I didn't make that motion.
Oh, okay.
We ought to formally make a motion, so entertain the acceptance of the motion or making the motion from one of my colleagues.
Happy to, happy to make the motion, Mayor, to support this initiative for ensuring that we have the to sustain our services and also be able to have local recovery and relief during this time for our city. And, and so happy to do so. And also, I mean, one side note, I think it's also looking ahead to see how we can also be able to reinstate lost services in the past, but happy to make the motion to support this.
Second.
All right. We have a first and a second. I'd like to thank the city attorney for keeping me in line. I guess I got so excited. So, Madam City Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Malpe, and all of your staff for the work you've done on this. And the motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you so much to our Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, and all of the community members who took the time to write, to write in to us tonight. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much, Ms. Malpe. All right. Moving on to item number four, execution of an agreement with the San Mateo County Housing Regional Housing Trust pertaining to Fort 93 Eastmore and the commitment of this Daly City Housing Trust Funds to the Heart's application for state-local housing trust fund program. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Bell.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Before you tonight is a request to approve an agreement between the city and the San Mateo County Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, also known as the Heart. The agreement describes an arrangement where the Heart will apply to the state for an allocation of local housing trust funds, or LHTF, for the purpose of financing several affordable housing projects in San Mateo County. All funding allocated under the LHTF program must be matched on a dollar-for-dollar basis with local sources, and Daly City's Housing Trust Fund meets the match criteria for this program. As described in your staff report, the application process for LHTF funds is competitive, and the application scoring criteria will give preference to applications from regional housing trust funds, such as the Heart. For this reason, staff recommends that the city support an application from the Heart to the state for LHTF funds rather than submitting an application directly. The Heart's application to the state will specifically identify the Core Companies project at Fort 93 Eastmore as one of the projects to be funded. The agreement before you formalizes the understanding between the Heart and the city that the city will provide up to $1.3 million in housing trust funds to be used as required match under the Heart's LHTF application and only for the purpose of the 493 Eastmore project. On June 8, the council voted to allocate $100,000 to the Heart in support of their application to the state for LHTF funds. That allocation was a general allocation and not directed toward a particular project. Tonight's action would increase that allocation from $100,000 to a total of $1.3 million for the specific purpose of funding the Core Companies project at Fort 93 Eastmore. The Core Companies project on Eastmore received its development entitlements to build 72 units of affordable housing in February of 2020. On June 2, the Core Companies submitted a request to the city for $6 million in financial assistance for their project, whose total estimated development costs are currently $57 million. The Core Company also intends to seek tax credits and affordable housing and sustainable community funding. And the likelihood of funding from these other state sources is greatly increased if the developer has legally binding commitments of funding from sources like the Heart and Daly City. So the funding under consideration tonight is a critical milestone in achieving the overall financial feasibility of the Fort 93 Eastmore project. The $1.3 million allocation to the Core Company development that is under consideration will be for the specific purpose of providing subsidy financing to Fort 93 Eastmore. If Heart is successful in obtaining grant funds from the state, Heart will lend just under $2.8 million to the Core Companies with the same loan terms as if the city provided them directly. If the Heart does not receive an award of LHTF funds from the state, the city will not be obligated to grant its housing trust funds to Heart, and the $1.3 million will remain available for the city to allocate either directly to Fort 93 Eastmore or another affordable housing purpose. Overall, the Heart LHTF application represents an excellent and rare opportunity for the city to leverage its housing trust funds. If the Heart's application to the state is successful, it will result in nearly doubling the amount of money currently available in the city's housing trust fund that could be made available to the core project. And with that, I'm available for questions. And we do have this evening, I believe, on the call Armando Sanchez, the Executive Director of the Heart, as well as Chris Neely and Carl Hartel from the Core Companies.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Okay, what I'd like to do is open it up for comments and both Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Callis can take note of the comments, questions being made, and we can answer it all at one time. So do we have any questions about the applicant or Ms. Bell?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify, or if you would, Mr. Mayor, that LHTF is our local housing trust fund so that the people at home are aware of the, and thank you, Ms. Betsy, you did an excellent job, by the way, so they know what the, the acronyms are standing for. But thank you for the, the hard work. I appreciate it.
Shall I, shall I take that question?
Okay, sure, if you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bell.
LHTF stands for Local Housing Trust Fund, and that is actually a program administered by the state. It's a state funding source. And it is confusing because we are, you are right now considering an allocation of Daly City housing trust funds. That is different than LHTF, which is a state program.
Well, thank you for the clarifications for our community so they understand that when they read the report, I appreciate that a lot. And thank you to all those at Heart as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Armando Sanchez, who's been working on this project. It's my understanding that you, you set aside funds specifically for Daly City when other cities have been trying to grab those funds pending your application. So thank you. I'd like to thank you for that and kindly give us a brief.
Sure. Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmembers. We really appreciate the opportunity to work for you, with you on this application. You know, when we've put this forward to the cities and said, here's an opportunity to double funding for your projects, the staff at Daly City was very responsive and very quick to say, we are very interested in participating in this because they saw the ability to double the funds going to a project in the city. And, you know, I, personally, for me, I'm extremely happy to return something to the city of Daly City. The City Council, as you know, had left Heart for a while, and I'm really just extremely happy to be able to return something to the city as you welcome us back as members of Heart. So thank you. And, you know, we're going to submit our application. I'm very positive. We're going to score very well, so I'm hopeful that it will bring in that money for our projects here.
Thank you, Mr. Armando. You're at liberty to say, you don't even have to name the cities, but how much money you had in the fund and how much was being allocated to other cities?
Yeah, we had a capacity of up to $5 million to apply for, and the city of San Mateo was very quick. They immediately said, hey, we want, I think they said, $2, $2 million. The staff from, like I said, Daly City was the next one that came up, and then East Palo Alto also requested 1.7 million. San Francisco also expressed an interest, but by that time, we, you know, we had used up in our entire capacity. Excuse me, a number of other cities in the county also expressed an interest, but they had a lot of barriers to overcome. And, you know, we ran out of capacity as well. But hopefully, there'll be another round next year and we can do it again.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Is it Ms. Callis? Did you want to say anything to Council about the project? I think we are pretty much familiar. The project has been languishing. It's transit-oriented development and close to our Bart Station and the affordability index. Do you want to provide any information? Okay. Thank you. I think we have enough information now. Like to open it up to public comments if we have any comments on this matter, Mr. Stolty.
I am checking right now. I do not believe we do. Let me just double check one last time. No, we do not have any comments.
Thank you so much. All right. Now, do we have any additional questions or comments from Council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. I think it's extremely important to support this as we know the, the essential need for more affordable housing. And given this project is fully affordable housing, it's, it's exciting to see if, you know, this moves forward. It's in a critical location as well, right by schools and also, you know, it's an empty lot right now. And so to have it become affordable housing for the community and to be able to also provide that is, is something that is of need. And so really happy this was brought forth. And I know Mayor Sylvester, this was something that you were a proponent for as well and with, and bringing it up to our Affordable Housing Committee. So I'm in full support of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there any other comments?
I'd like to comment as well, Mr. Mayor. I, I believe this project is very critical and important to providing affordable housing to our community in this public crisis of, for housing. And I totally support this, this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dr. Rod. Any other further comments?
A short one, Mr. Mayor, and it would be the fact that.
Let's remember DJ, hold on for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So maybe Betsy or Armando can maybe try to answer this. So the project on Eastmore, I wanted to sort of dive deeper into what it looks like in terms of how much authority or how much influence does the council have on making sure that, you know, in line with my motive today of ensuring that Black Lives Matter in terms of not having undue restrictions or barriers to obtain this housing. I know that there are standards and that there are, you know, rules when it comes to funding, and I just wanted to find a path where Daly fits into molding or reshaping how this is done.
Well, I have a couple of comments, and then maybe Armando can add. The agreement that the city will have with HART says that the funding has to be used for a project that meets or exceeds the city's housing trust fund spending plan. The housing trust fund spending plan envisions that any new development will have a very aggressive outreach and marketing plan that will affirmatively further fair housing and with special outreach to traditionally excluded groups. So the city will have every opportunity to outreach to groups that have been excluded in the past. I will say that the Core Company's proposed income targeting goes well beyond what is usually required. Our housing trust fund spending plan envisions targeting at 80% AMI and below. The Core Companies, their pro forma envisions units targeted at 60%, 50%, 40%, and 30%. That's very, very deep income targeting, making those units available to people of extremely low incomes. I don't know, Armando, do you want to add to any of this?
Councilmember Buena Ventura, I completely support what your intent and motives, and we will work very hard with the developer to make sure they reach out to disadvantaged communities, African-American communities, Filipinos, and others. I do have to say that the developer, it's not hard or the city necessarily, but the developer has to be very careful with fair housing law about how they go about doing things, so they can't, you know, do specific targeting or anything like that in a way that would favor one racial ethnic group or another. So they do have to be careful in that way, but we will work with them under the city's direction to make sure they reach out to the communities that we all have an interest in serving.
That sounds really, really good, and I'm grateful for those answers, and I think that I'm agreement with them, and I support this project. I guess what I'm also concerned about is, you know, I mean, the words sound good, but I'm wondering if is there extensive outreach in consultation with the council so that we are, you know, constantly being consulted and made sure that our interests, what we want to see there really does happen? Or I don't want this project to just take off and only come to us when it's too late that there are problems that surface, but I'd like to build an ongoing relationship where this issue that I'm concerned about, and I'm sure the rest of the council is always in the forefront and we're always sort of kept in the loop on the efforts, the outreach, that sort of thing.
Perhaps, Chris, you can answer that as a developer?
Certainly. Councilman Buena Ventura, Mayor, rest of the council, we appreciate the commitment to the project. You know, we share your values. We're still trying to figure out how to address these values in work going forward, you know, Black Lives Matter, and how to make a difference going forward, not to continue the direction things were going, but how to change the direction. The nuance and the challenges is to how to manage fair housing, and so I guess what I could commit to is the hardest thing is to raise the capital to get these projects built and making this commitment. And it was such a pleasure for me to receive a phone call from Armando and Betsy with an idea how to bring funds to a project. Usually, we're having to go and ask and come up with the idea, so to have the city and HART come to us with an idea was a welcome change to how to make it go forward. We have an application into the county for funds. We're working on an application for cap and trade funds, give its proximity to transit at the state level, so we're working diligently on that. You know, what we have done in the past is provide either quarterly or semi-annual updates maybe to the housing task force on how the project is progressing and what its target is to keep everybody informed, and then a commitment, once we get, you know, close to the construction start, you know, hopefully we'll have learned a lot. How do we move forward with a process, an equitable process for lease-up to make these new apartments available and accessible to all members of Daly City and try to have it accessible to Black members of Daly City, Brown members of Daly City, and those who are in most need of the housing? You know, it's a new world, we're trying to figure our way, but we welcome, you know, others who have different thoughts and ideas and ways about how to go about doing that, and we welcome the input.
Well, I'll say, I believe you, and it's really refreshing to hear how you recognize it is a new world and that changes need to happen, and so I appreciate the thoughtfulness that you have already exhibited in our mindful work, and so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buena Ventura. Do we have any other further comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I mean, and the developer and the core and everyone involved, I remember when it first came and to think that something like that could actually achieve that and turn into something that is so needed, and the timing is incredible. It's funny how life turns out while you try, like you said, you're probably looking for the funds, and we were so proactive, such great staff, that when they see an opportunity, they just move right on it because they know what our community needs are. So very proud of them as well, and they reached out and they worked so quickly with heart. So this is very exciting and well-needed and very thoughtful, and when you have all that together in a combination and care about a community, that's what I say, a win for all, especially during these COVID times and very unprecedented, that we don't know what's going to be in the future, but at least people will know that to have a roof over your head and to be able, hopefully, you know, get a job and be able to have transportation that's close, then we can start moving in the right direction and provide people the basic needs in life. It's the basic needs, like, you know, housing. Housing is just a basic need, and then it's so needed. So here we are in 2020 and making it come true in Daly City. So I appreciate all the hard work, the heart, not to use that pun, but heart in it, but it is a great pun, right? And that's put in it by everyone, so thank you very much, and looking forward to the project, and know that you guys are very equitable in your stance and in your value system and know what our diverse community needs. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Zobel, again, for being so proactive and knowing what our needs are. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DJ. Any other further comments? Betsy, you were coming up so often, did you want to make another comment?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, you kept unmuting every so often, and I thought maybe you had wanted to make another comment?
No, no, I made my comments.
Thank you so much. All right. I'd like to open it up at this time for any comments, if we have any from the public.
We do not have any comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Solti. Okay, any final comments from the council members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Neal and the staff for all your hard work on this and seeing this at the table. I think in respect to the question earlier around marketing and reaching out to the community, it is definitely a breath of fresh air to hear the cooperation with Mr. Neal, and if there are ways in which we can provide you with some creative ways to reach out to the community, happy to work with you. And my previous job with the Billson Housing Program, been able to work on ways to reach out to the community, and maybe it's figuring out when you're at that stage and how to work together on that. And understanding that there's fair housing law, but there's definitely ways around what was mentioned earlier, which is affirmative marketing and respect to reaching out to the community. So just want to say I'm happy to lend a hand and help in that regard.
Thank you, we'll take you up on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other further comments? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to make the motion that we forward.
Second, Mayor, you motioned a second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further comments? Okay, Madam City Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Hi.
Ms. Manalo.
Hi.
Dr. Rod.
Hi.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Hi.
Mr. Sylvester.
Hi. Congratulations, Mr. Sanchez. We're hoping for the best. I'd like to thank Ms. Zobel for all the hard work, and especially given the timelines that was appropriate here to get her to move on this application process. I'd like to thank the rest of council for seeing through for a great project that's to come, and that's additional housing in our city, and. All right, the next item is continuing on the communications, is acceptance of parks and open space master plan. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Chu, and I guess Ms. Callis, I confused you the last time, I thought you were on the core property, but anyway, Mr. Chu, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to turn it over to Sabelli Caya, the project manager for the Parks and Open Space Master Plan.
Thank you, Richard. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. The item that you have before you is for acceptance of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. City staff has been working with Gates and Associates for the past couple of years on developing a master plan that would identify each facility, each park, open space, and includes the top lots as well. We have visited the sites, and Gates and Associates has evaluated every site. They have conducted an intensive outreach. The idea for developing this plan is to see how we can improve some of our parks, but this was not based on just what city staff thinks that should be done, but we needed to also reach out to the community, and Gates and Associates, as I said before, has performed multiple public outreach. We've had, for example, we've had an online survey, phone survey, we attended different events in the community to get an input on what they would like to see at our parks. The attachment of the staff report is the actual Parks Master Plan, which is a living document, which means that we will be changing and developing as we want. I'm going to now pass it on to Gail Donaldson, who is with Gates and Associates, and she will have a short presentation for you. Gail, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Mayor Sylvester and council members. I am going to try sharing my screen here for this presentation. If that. So is that coming through as a shared screen?
I don't see it yet.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay. As I said, I'm Gail Donaldson with Gates and Associates, and we've been really privileged to be working with city staff and with the community of Daly City on this master plan and gathering a lot of information and synthesizing it and really trying to put together what the city's visions and goals are for the parks and open space. The purpose of the plan was to really look at the parks that you have as a built-out city. You don't have a whole lot of opportunities to expand into a larger park areas because there isn't that much space out there, but we looked at all of the parks and the potential open spaces that are currently existing in the city, and then we went out to the community and did, as Sabelli mentioned, a number of different types of outreach events. We find it much more effective to go to places where the people are rather than trying to draw people into meetings, so we went and had pop-up booths at school events, at National Night Out, at the farmer's market, and we reached a lot of people and got a lot of community input. And the goal was to come up with a roadmap with guidelines, principles, and potential projects to move the city's parks forward in a direction that's supported by the community. Whoops. This is a timeline of where we've been. The project was initiated in 2018, and we spent a lot of time looking at all the different parks that you have, evaluating the conditions of the parks, looking at the demographics and trends in recreation and park planning, both nationally and locally. We assembled an advisory committee of community members, which we met with over the course of looking into the park system and doing the community outreach. We did two rounds of community outreach in the late part of 2018, early part of 2019, including a statistically valid phone survey that represented demographically accurate breakdown of the community, these pop-up booths at community events and activities, and also online survey and an online map where people could look at the parks that they go to and give us feedback on what works and what doesn't work in their local park that they use. We went and made presentations to the Recreation Commission and the city council in early, late 2018, early 2019, and then we spent a lot of time taking all of this input that we got and synthesizing it and looking at it, turning it into a vision for the parks, goals, and guidelines that create a framework on how you make evaluations of potential park improvements, and making specific recommendations for each of the parks and the open spaces that exist in the city now. We went through rounds of drafts and working with the city staff very diligently to get this all in a very user-friendly and sensible document, and we've come back to the Planning Commission, the Recreation Commission, and finally are back here to the council to look for acceptance of the plan and see if there's anything that you wanted to add or update or any comments that need to be incorporated. Back again to the basis of the community input, we did it in multiple languages, multiple venues, we just, we ended up with a lot of community participation, and it was really valuable input, and the thing that always is really, really satisfying is that you see the same types of concern. is that you see the same types of concerns coming up across the board. Different venues, different groups of people have the same kind of interests and concerns. So things rise to the top. There's communalities and what people want to see in their parks in their city. Out of all the research and outreach that we did, the top things that came up for citizens of Bailey City were new and improved playgrounds, more interesting playgrounds, more of them updated playgrounds, new and improved barbecue areas. They were, there was a big interest in gathering spaces. There's very social community wants small gathering spaces, places for large gatherings, birthday parties, and just places to go and sit with friends in the shelter and, and socialize. Also, sports courts are very popular. So people were looking for more basketball, tennis, upgraded and improved and mainly highly maintained sports facility, sports courts. A lot of people want to see more restrooms in the parks, but as we know, those can be maintenance issues and they're not so much necessary in the little tot lots that people access in their neighborhoods, but they're very important in places where people are doing sports tournaments and spending the day at picnics and parties and things like that. Another concern was lighting. That was a twofold concern. One was lighting sports fields so that the fields are more usable for a longer length of time, both sports fields and the sports courts, but also just general safety lighting so that parks are safe and usable in the evenings. Putting all the information together, we tried to come up with a comprehensive vision for the parks. And we, with the advisory committee, we came up with this vision that we would ensure that Bailey City has an accessible, equitable and sustainable system of parks that maximizes the recreational opportunities for all of the city's residents, workers and visitors. And this tracks pretty closely to what is in your general plan already about accessible, equitable, sustainable parks for all of the people in the city, for a diverse community. So the goals and the guidelines that make up a big part of this document are a framework on how to look at potential improvements. Because as Sibel said, it's a living document. Right now, the, the specific improvements that are listed for each park are a snapshot. Things are going to change over time. Some things will be done, some things will be funded through grants and all that. So we need a framework to look at what is important in the park system. So there were five major themes. One of them was active and passive uses for all residents. When we asked what people like about parks, some of them want exercise, some of them want playgrounds, some of them want sports fields and active things, but other people want to sit and enjoy nature. So the park system needs to have places for each of these activities to happen. So the system as a whole has to provide that for the citizens of Bailey City. And at the same time, different types of activities need to be available in each neighborhood. The neighborhood serving parks should have things that allow for peaceful relaxation, for sitting on a lawn with a book or for playing sports or playing in a playground or getting exercise. You have a lot of multi-generational families in your community. We need places where grandparents can feel comfortable taking a walk and having a seat while they're watching their kids in the playground. We need things, exercise equipment and things that are usable by people with different ages and abilities. So we're looking for a balance of facilities and amenities in the park system that will appeal to, will have some appeal to everybody in the community. Active and passive residence for, uses for all residents also means that we want to expand the opportunities that are in your existing park sites and park system. There are some opportunity sites that were identified in the process where there could be park amenities incorporated into some underused open spaces. But just some of the parks are underused and are not providing the types of activities and facilities that the community is looking for. So we looked at each of the parks and came up with recommendations about how to provide things in the parks that would make them more usable for people. We also want to be able to increase the time the parks can be used. And that could be with the lighting, as was asked about. And it could also be things like synthetic sports fields that don't need to be rested and can be played on in all seasons and not have to be waiting for the mud to clear up and the grass to grow back. One of the things that came with, that was really interesting was when we went to the community and had maps of the 28 parks and the open spaces in Bailey City, we kept hearing, we didn't know that we had so many parks here. So just increasing the awareness of the parks that you do have and that are usable and that people would like to use would be great, whether it's on the city's website, whether it's virtual park tours, just different ways that people can look at finding out what the parks are and where they are and how, how to get to them. Another theme was having welcoming and comfortable parks. And that also involves balancing the activities in the parks, you know, having activities that are not so compatible, like a tot lot and a place where teens hang out adjacent to each other. Maybe you want to have those a little bit separated, but have parks, playground spaces and seating for adults to watch their kids, have the uses that work together. Social spaces of all sizes were really high on people's wish list. As I said, small picnic areas where a couple of people can sit and talk to each other, to places for small birthday parties, to places for big community gatherings. Also, welcoming and comfortable means safe and maintaining the high quality of maintenance that you do have in your parks. Again, we come back to that theme of having different things in the parks that will attract people to them, health and wellness, supporting health and wellness. The health part being the walking and the sports and the exercise. That's, well, that's the wellness part. The health part is also having a place for relaxation, for socialization, and just for enjoying nature. Enjoyment of nature came up as a pretty high priority in some of our venues. Whoops. We need to have parks accessible to people and ideally accessible by walking or using a bicycle or doing something other than having to get in a car and drive. So accessibility is a big priority for locating parks and for working with a walk bar, walk by Bailey City, planning to make the routes to the parks accessible. Also, once one gets to the parks, universal design, making sure that the parks are both ADA accessible, which I believe you're going to hear more about in the next presentation, but also accessible beyond the ADA guidelines for people with all different kinds of abilities to be able to use and enjoy facilities in the parks. The walking to a park is a big national movement. Trust for Public Land and their Park Serve organization has a 10-minute walk national movement. And they've done surveys of all the cities. And this map here is one of the maps from their Park Serve that shows that actually about a, over 80% of Bailey City residents are within a 10-minute walk of the park. But I, it also identified areas where parks are more lacking. And it showed the, identified the area higher need for parks to serve the community. So looking in those areas for opportunities, whether there's a new development that comes that might be able to provide open space or whether there's some underused place that could be serving as a park, that's, that's a really important thing. People wanted to see unique and distinctive parks. They want their parks to be memorable. And you do that in a number of ways. One of them is not so much relying on cookie cutter equipment and things like that, but trying to come up with creative play, equipment, unique design, coming up, using, incorporating art into parks and also celebrating the diverse culture that you have in Bailey City with areas for community gatherings, with culturally sensitive art and play structures and things like that. So providing places that people will remember and say, yeah, let's go to that park because it's really interesting and fun. Sustainability, again, that's, that's a twofold issue. One of them is environmental sustainability. Having native planting and sustainable landscaping helps conserve water and manages stormwater. It reduces the maintenance that you need to do if you plant the right plants in the right places and the right sizes. Energy efficiency has gotten much, much better in our outdoor environments. LED lighting, the kinds of things that will save money and save energy are also things that can be used as an educational element in the parks, teaching people about things that are being done to preserve our environment and make our, make our environment healthier. At the same time, the parks really need to strive for economic sustainability. And that means, again, using planting and design to facilitate maintenance, to make maintenance less expensive and less intensive, to expand revenues. Parks, people are recognizing how important parks are the more that we're stuck in our homes and not asked not to go far from our neighborhoods. A lot of opportunities are for revenue recapture, whether it is more rentable spaces in parks for being able to reserve a space for a birthday party or something like that. Also, a lot of the activities that have been happening indoors, like yoga classes and yoga studios and boot, you know, fitness bootcamps, a lot of people are looking for places to do that outdoors. And that may be also an opportunity to try to regain some revenue to help maintain the park system. Fee assessments, the city has in lieu park fees and development impact fees associated with development, and those need to be reassessed, reevaluated as time goes on to make sure that they're still in line with what parks cost. So within that framework, we looked at the existing park facilities and we made recommendations for each one of the 25 parks and the six open spaces and potential park sites. And we divided them into short-term action items, medium term and long term. We put price tags on all of these things so that the city has an idea of what kind of overall financial implications they have. And we did this for each one of the facilities that you already have. And this page here is just an example of what we did for each of the parks. Talked about the location, the size, listed the facilities that are in the parks and what condition are they in now. So giving a snapshot right now of where that particular park is, comments on what is being used or what opportunities there are in the park. And then again, the action items, what we think were the highest priority. Sometimes it's because it's a very high priority to the community and sometimes it's just low hanging fruit that can make the park better without a lot of expense. And we diagrammed our recommendations so one could get a sense visually of what the changes to the parks might be. In these times of really challenging budgets and a lot of competing projects, we needed to have a way to try to prioritize because there's always going to be more things that want to be done than can be done with the available funds. So the first cut is, does a project meet those goals and guidelines of sustainability and access and welcoming and something for everybody? But we'd also, in the implementation chapter, developed a prioritization checklist. And that checklist is a number of things of how do you weigh the, how do you weigh a couple of competing projects that are both good projects? And one of the most important things, of course, is public health and safety. If there's something dangerous, a tree going to fall down in the park or some play structure that really needs renovation because it's not safe anymore, those things rise to the top. Also, protection of your existing infrastructure. It's really important to take care of and hang on to what's working in the parks so that you don't incur expenses that are not necessary. Community support and engagement, what were the things that the community was asking for? And in going out to make improvements to neighborhood parks and to community parks, it's really important to go back and check back in with the community and touch base with them and make sure that the plans that are going forward are really what the community wants. Also, one of the things that comes into play is, is there an opportunity to partner, to have a joint, a joint use agreement with a school or with a nonprofit organization? Or are there grant opportunities that would allow something to be funded without depleting city resources? We ended up looking at the funding and talking about different opportunities. As I said, stewardships and partnerships can be a big balancing thing when the revenues and the challenges are financially tight. Revenue generation and cost recovery, that was something else that is trying to minimize the deficits that occur when you have to rely on the general fund for everything. Looking at grants, Proposition 68, the state proposition that passed last year or the year before is distributing millions of dollars over the state. It's very competitive, but I think that there are a lot of projects within the Bailey City park system that would be competitive for Prop 68 grants, there are a number of different types. Again, making sure that the development fees are keeping up with the costs of renovating and maintaining parks and creating parks. And also, not unlike the sales tax that you were talking about, the possibility of going for a bond, maybe combined with libraries, maybe combined with some other need in the community. But that is a bigger, it's a bigger piece of work and requires a lot more pre-planning to make sure that the expense that you would go to on a bond issue will result in voters voting for it. So we are asking for your input. Are there any other things that you would like to see in the parks plan? We're asking that you adopt the resolution to accept the Parks and Open Space Plan. There was one little, one little extra slide I have because the Recreation Commission saw that we had a map showing all the locations of sports fields, both city owned and joint use, owned by schools. And they asked for the same thing for sports courts. So we created another plan that shows where all the basketball, tennis, both city owned and both owned by schools so that one can get a better idea how those are distributed throughout the city and in the neighborhoods and see what kind of possibilities there are for public use for those. So I thank you for your attention. I tried to be quick because you're having a long night tonight. And I would love to hear any input that you have on this Parks Project. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Donaldson. What I'd like to do, well, I'd like to thank Mr. Chu. This is something that you're going to be adhering to if we vote on it. And Ms. Callis, thank you so much for being a part. I'm sure you perhaps coordinated and get it all, the input from the communities. I have a few questions. Excuse me, some input. Ms. Donaldson, I don't know if you know, but Bailey City applied to the World Health Organization. We haven't gotten an answer back yet. However, we did get an answer back from AARP. And Bailey City has been approved as a age-friendly city. So as we move forward in this master plan, if we can give more attention to our seniors and to show that we're going along with the program and, and we can keep an eye towards that. This kind of reminds me, and again, I have to thank you, Mr. Chu, because this kind of reminds me of the Vision Zero Plan that we approved as well. So it looks like it's all coming together. The question I have for you, Mr. Chu, is it was my understanding that we decreased the lighting at the Cerro Monte Park over on Wembley. And you know, that's where they had the barbecues and things like that. And I recently learned that our lights are back on, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Outstanding. I think lighting is very important. Of course, we have to think about surrounding neighbors at the park. So as long as they're, you know, they don't stay on all night, especially during daylight savings time, I think we can save money there. So thank you for follow up on that. And the last question I have is facilities and equipment. I know not all parks can accommodate, you know, based upon size, like the little tot lot we have over near Cerro Monte, but I'm thinking about facilities where they can house equipment and provide equipment, like the ping pong tables. Each neighborhood is different. I'm familiar with growing up on the East Coast in the depressed neighborhood. They would jump rope outside in the community and just have fun. Something called double dutch. And I'm just wondering if we can consider at some of these parks having facilities where they can basically provide equipment. So just a thought, I just wanted to put that out there. So that's all I have at this time. I'll open it up to my colleagues if they have any additional comments or suggestions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to jump in if I may. This is so exciting to see, really exciting. Even though it's the end of the night, I am recharged to see an amazing master plan for our community in regards to parks and open space. I remember when it was just inception of reaching out to the community, gathering the input. And now to see how comprehensive this has been. Thank you for all the hard work, Director Chu, Ms. Donaldson, Ms. Kelly's. It's shown here how much community engagement and outreach that has been done to our community members. And to me, that is definitely important. And some of the questions I do have are, are there? And was there any talks around having community gardens or also dog parks? I know there are a lot of dog lovers in our city. And then also, you know, we had a skate park in, in Daily City at one point. It's not really utilized. And those are, those are some of my questions. And then I'll go further with some of my last comments.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Manalo. Yes, thank you for bringing those up. The skate park, dog park, we actually have those as part of some of the recommendations in the Parks Master Plan. Skate park, there, there's another different location, a larger facility in terms of where that recommendation is for, for a new skate park. And so, so yes, definitely, we have a lot of those recommendations within the Parks Master Plan. The challenge obviously is, you know, finding funding and securing funding to do those things. But at least we have a plan to move forward and it definitely has input from, from the neighbors and residents. And so we have a roadmap in terms of, you know, how to move forward.
Thank you so much. It's a very comprehensive, exciting roadmap that you have here. And I know even just looking at the strategies of how to implement these, these plans around creative strategies to see whether or not there could be partnerships that could be involved. I, I did notice, you know, community members saying they want to see more events and maybe that's where there could be more partnerships with businesses to, you know, or even other larger corporations that may want to sponsor, you know, an area or whatnot, but because you have this roadmap, I mean, you know, there's really amazing, amazing things that can be done in the future. And I think the most valuable part of it is that you got the community input straight from our residents and community members. So I just want to say thank you. I'm, even though it's late, I actually got recharged from, from, from seeing this and extremely excited. And I know each and every one of you put a lot of hard work into this. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to comment and have some questions as well. I just want to say thank you for putting together this whole report. It was thorough. I spent the last couple of days like going through everything from how you looked at every single park and open space and the recommendations for each site. It was pretty amazing. And I also want to thank you for having engaging ways of, of engaging the public in terms of feedback. My question is, how does COVID nineteen change some of these plans? Because you know, I, I feel like since the parks are closed, how does this, how does the, you know, COVID nineteen wasn't part of this report and COVID nineteen wasn't there during the studies of this? So are there particular trends that parks are doing now? Just want to know your thoughts.
There are.
Go ahead.
Okay, there, there are particular things that parks are doing. They're sort of designating spaces where they can lay out socially distanced, you know, demarcation so that people know that they can go hang out in these specific areas without being too close to anybody else. This is a really a long range plan and so it's a snapshot and it's something that has to evolve and roll with some of the punches there. So both the closing of shared, you know, the, the high-touch facilities like playgrounds, that's, you know, obviously we hope that's not going to go on for a whole lot longer, but it's for, it's real now. Having, just having a variety of spaces where people can just go out and get fresh air. And maybe if they don't, if we don't have a place where they can pick up a jump rope, maybe they can bring one from home and just be outside and do something there. So I think that I have been seeing a much, at least in my own neighborhood, a much higher appreciation for the open space in the parks. There are more people out there using them just to go outside someplace and be with friends with their masks on and things like that. But it's, there's a big appreciation for that. And there is also, as Ed mentioned, I'm seeing a lot more opportunities. There are people doing, you know, martial arts classes on the lawns and yoga and different kinds of things. And if it's a private, you know, a private instructor charging students to do something, certainly using the park should be a way that you can regain a little bit of income because everybody's going to be struggling with the finances for the, for, for some time now.
Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, one of the things we're looking into is in terms of, you know, some signage in terms of kind of, you know, the upcoming, you know, reopening at some point is, is just a kind of a reminder for folks in terms of social distancing. Just, you know, maximum number of people on a, on a tennis court, for example. So, so, so again, but as Kay, Gail mentioned, this is a long-term plan. Hopefully at some point we can kind of resume kind of, you know, normal as, as normal as it can be in terms of being able to play on the playground and things like that, so.
Thank you.
And any other comments at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. First, I remember when it started, just like everyone else. And then you're even a city hall, Ms. Donaldson, you had the board up and then you had the, at our Salvadorian event. You had there, you were there, you were everywhere, everywhere. That outreach was incredible, totally incredible. And Mr. Chu, amazing. And I remember when, when I first asked about the wheelchair accessibility and the tactile for maybe children that are, are blind or whatever. And then I noticed when I went through it as well, I know we have a long road to go, but that definitely is included for, as far as I know, correct, that wheelchair swing. Now, I'll hold David Canepa responsible for that, Supervisor Canepa, because he told me, kind of like, said that we could hopefully get maybe some funding for that. So that from the beginning, when we had that discussion, so we can still hold him accountable for, for the funding. And then some ideas on the skate park, which is exciting, is that, I think, was you, Mr. Chu, or, or somebody I was speaking to one day, that maybe Tony Hawks could probably sponsor. Even if we maybe, we might have to put his name on the park. But he might want to do that for the young people as well, because the skate park has been, they've been really missing that a lot, as you know. And thank you for thinking about their safety by closing the other facility down. Reaching out to someone like that, where the youth can have a place to go to, that maybe Tony Hawks would be, love to be involved in our area. But we have to get those connections. We're still in COVID. Hopefully we'll be able to open in some ways. The courts be a multi-use, just like in Burlingame with pickleball and with tennis at the same time. Always thought that was brilliant. And so that, that was great as well. And including the, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, the dog park. See, these are things that we, we kind of didn't have. We kind of like had the space and I liked the way that you guys did the analysis and, and worked together on this. And Ms. Donaldson is, is like, you know, you're already become a part of our, our community as well. And with you and Mr. Chu and the staff members, I've heard nothing but rave things about as it went forward. Even the bicycle pedestrian committee was really excited each time that it would, you know, things will be presented. So it was really fun to hear. So I always tell myself, geez, I should go to that, that committee. Because it was always having the updates about the parks and everybody was so excited. But thank you for your hard work and it, it does have the great roadmap to go to. And we do hope we can engage and we might have to adjust, you know, as we are now. And like you said, the outdoors for the yoga or Tai Chi and maybe revenues associated with that. And we don't know what the future holds. And then sculptures and interactive things like that. But the wheelchair swing, I knew it was very expensive. But I remember that it was a big, big, big thing. So being able to hopefully have it at more than one park would be great. And we have a lot of children and the autism spectrum are, are different needs, special needs. And I think that to incorporate that is very important. Because that means that all, all children are, are, you know, brought to the park. Because I see them go by, but sometimes they can't get there on the wood chips or they can't get there, you know, with their wheelchairs or the, you know? And that's really, you know, hardening because the ADA only gave us so much. But they never made things really, I mean, no offense to the ADA, but they, some things are not truly accessible for all children. But I do know that in our city, that we want to make sure that all children have accessibility. So I really hope that we can keep that in mind as well. So thank you very much. Excitement, yes, ten o'clock, but we, this is actually early for us, Ms. Donaldson. But thank you, Mr. Chu. You always hang in there with us at night.
Great, thank you.
Thank your staff and yours as well, Ms. Donaldson.
Thank you.
And our city manager as well.
Good council member. All right, any further comments before we open it up to a public hearing, I mean, public comments? Okay, hearing none. I'll defer to our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Stolti. Do we have any comments from the public?
No public comment, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, any final comments from the council?
I do, Mr. Mayor, I'll be very short on this. I just want to say, again, it's such a comprehensive, you know, report and a master plan that really shows also your thought in creating intergenerational spaces. And so it's, it's just exciting to see this move forward. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, I'd like to move with the acceptance of Parks and Open Space Master Plan.
Second, oh, did you move it?
I moved it and I, 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 I had a second thought as I went in. Maybe somebody else should do it. But anyway, got it. Okay. I'll make the motion, Vice Mayor's second. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. T. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, Ms. Donaldson and Ms. Collins. Great job. Again, echoed Vice Mayor, very, very comprehensive. And we definitely know who the expert is. So good luck and I'm sure we'll be hearing more from you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with your community. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you. Okay, next item is item number six, acceptance of ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Chu and Ms. Kallis again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. And in the interest of time, I'm just going to turn it over to Savelli, also a project manager for the ADA self-evaluation transition plan.
Thank you, everyone, for staying with us. Now we're moving on to the acceptance of the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. And ADA stands for the Americans with Disabilities Act, and it was enacted in nineteen ninety. It's made up of five different sections and the one that is very specific to state and local government is Title II. Title II requires the city to perform a self-evaluation of our policies and procedures and also any practices that we have. And, you know, to identify the facilities and programs and services that we offered and that they must be modified to accommodate individuals with disabilities. In regards to the transition plan, what that does is that, and this is why we have hired MIG and Mr. Tim Gilbert will give a presentation, but pretty much what they have done is that they have reviewed our policies and they have also visited the different facilities to make sure that they are, you know, available for the public, you know, and especially individuals with disabilities. They have also looked into the public right away. So any sidewalks, any traffic lights, you know, make sure that, you know, we have everything ADA, you know, in, in, you know, approved. So now I'm, you know, I know that we're probably running out of time, so I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Gilbert so that he can do the presentation for you tonight. Thank you. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you so much. I'm very happy to be here and provide this presentation to you. And I want to acknowledge your staff, Ms. Kallis and Mr. Chu, in addition to many other people on the staff of Daily City and the community. This was definitely a staff and community intensive project and I think we can see the results. As Ms. Kallis mentioned, the ADA is a civil rights law. We oftentimes think of it as a building code. But in fact, it's a civil rights law and as she mentioned, five titles, including employment, public agencies, services and programs. And Title III are the public sector. So everybody really must comply with the requirements of the ADA, which, which states that you may not discriminate against a person with a disability. There's a title that handles telecommunications in terms of websites and then miscellaneous provision. And it is definitely the second title that, that is important to us. And as mentioned, requirement to produce the plan that you have before you, self-evaluation and transition plan. It's also required that public agencies have a designated ADA coordinator. And that is Richard Chu. He's taken that role overseeing Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. You also have a grievance procedure, a requirement of this law. And to continue to remove accessibility barriers, both programmatic and physical and document that process. It's also a requirement that people with disabilities are included in the preparation of the plan. We in fact did that by comprising a focus group. Made comprised of people with disabilities and organizations that support people with disabilities. And we held two focus group meetings, one in November, where we presented the results of a comprehensive identification, evaluation of facility and right-of-way barriers. We'll talk about that a little more. But we, we wanted to show the people at the focus group some of the raw data, some of the findings that we had uncovered from our comprehensive review. We also reviewed and vetted potential criteria for prioritizing barriers. Because this has to be more than simply a database of issues. This is, this is designed to be an action plan and a resource and a, and a footprint for improvements into the future. The second focus group, we presented and discussed the draft plan before it was released for public review and confirmed the prioritization criteria. And then finally, the plan was released as a public draft. And, and, and now here we are at the council meeting where the public can also has had access to these and can review. The outlawing of the plan, introduction of the legislative mandate, definitions of some of the technical terms. The self-evaluation is the review of policies and programs. Because the ADA really is based on, for Title II agencies, is based on people with disabilities being able to, to negotiate the activities and services provided by the city. And that includes the physical access of, of the parks and sidewalks and public buildings. The transition plan is where we identify a plan of action to remove barriers. We'll talk about that. The ADA coordinator, roles and responsibilities are listed in this plan. And the plan, you may have seen in your packet, is quite lengthy. But this is really only the paper and kind of a print version. There's a really massive amount of data that's included in a relational database that is, covers every, all the comprehensive surveys of the facilities and the right-of-way. There is also a section here for resources for city staff. It's our intention that this plan is not just an official plan required by agencies such as federal transportation agencies and HUD for receiving grants. This has now become kind of a such as, uh, federal transportation agencies and, and HUD for receiving grants, this has now become kind of a witness test plan, if you have a plan, you're working your plan, those grants are much more available. Uh, and the appendices are, uh, include the staff questionnaire that was distributed to a program staff to see how people were accommodated, uh, in the provision of services. People, for instance, with, uh, hearing loss, or deaf, or, uh, visual disabilities, or blind, or people with cognitive disabilities. Uh, also, the accommodation grievance form is there, the notes for the public outreach process, and a barrier summary report for all the facilities that were reviewed. And, uh, just a moment to kind of dig into this idea of program accessibility, as I mentioned, uh, the ADA for public agencies really focuses on the ability of people to participate in civic life, and some of those things are even checking out a library book, not only the library itself, but the processes and information. Uh, requesting information about a city service must be accessible to people who are blind or have hearing loss, attending a public meeting, uh, interacting with the website, and even using the, uh, public sidewalks and programs are considered a program provided by, uh, Daly City. Now, using the self-evaluation of policies and programs by staff, the recommendations contained in this report in, uh, help, will help people in modifications to uh, city programs, services, and activities, and the recommendations are directly from the ADA legislation itself, where this is not a best practices document, this is the, uh, kind of a regulatory document, so we want to be careful not to interject our good ideas, but simply really focus on, uh, on what is required. Adjustments and review of policies, uh, and just overall improving inclusivity in, in, um, for people with disabilities in civic life. Uh, there are certain circumstances in which, when a person makes a request for an accommodation, for instance, uh, to have a sign, uh, language interpreter at a public meeting, uh, there, that may not be, you may not ever need or want to, uh, not provide that, but there may be some cir- circumstances where you uh, have a reason not to, and one would be where there's a fundamental alteration of the program. In other words, if the recreation, uh, folks provide a rock climbing, uh, uh, program, well, that's a rock climbing program, and people may not be able to do that, or they may be able to do, but you don't need to alter that pro- that program in order to accommodate someone. If there's an undue, if a request results in an un- new financial burden, uh, that means accomplished with significant expense, uh, or administrative burden, uh, those are a little bit harder to justify, but they are legitimate, uh, criteria for, um, for not providing that service as it may be requested, of course, you would always negotiate and discuss a request with a person, uh, who's making that request, and try to find a way to provide that work, but the ADA legislation does provide some, uh, some relief from, uh, making any and all accommodations as they're requested. Well, the, uh, that's a very brief overview of some of the programmatic issues, again, we, uh, we have the questionnaire and the appendices of the report that goes through a very detailed list of questions that were asked, and the document itself contains uh, many, many, uh, recommendations for providing accessible services, but to move more towards the facilities of things, a kind of federal, uh, codes to look at every facility, and to provide both a diagram of where barriers were discovered, and a list, uh, both in paper and also in, uh, in, in, in a database, uh, so when improvements are made, or work is being done in any of the facilities, every, any park, any public, any city building, uh, this list of barriers that have been determined can be used by the contractor, the designer, or maintenance staff, uh, to make sure that barriers are removed during that project, so this is a very practical guide, uh, book for making improvements over time, uh, to facilities. The ADA also provides some options to the city, um, in, because of its programmatic focus, one of the, uh, options is to provide, uh, the same service in another accessible location. Um, uh, or you can make the alterations that are needed to that facility, but this idea of relocating the activity to an accessible location will relieve the city of a very large number of the items that are identified in our plan, and frankly, priced in our plan, uh, so that never would you ever have to do all of this work. You can make these decisions based on, can I relocate that service? Or can I make those alterations to the facility, or to provide auxiliary aids and services to assist an individual, like a sign language interpreter, or an assistant in a, uh, in a recreation program, so there are options rather than making all of the modifications that are listed in our comprehensive evaluation. Well, our database, of course, as I mentioned, is very lengthy and includes all of these, uh, barriers, and uh, we really need to make sure that we have vetted a criteria for prioritizing these, uh, impro- these, this work. And, uh, we worked with city staff and, uh, quite extensively with the focus group, uh, to vet criteria, so we looked at uh, locations, we, we wanted to make sure we prioritize locations where citizens' rights and responsibilities are, are engaged with, uh, things like voting, or, uh, permits, or, uh, public at, public meetings, certainly city hall is going to rise to the top in that criteria. We also wanted to look at the level of use by the public, and particularly by people with disabilities, but really in general, uh, facilities that have a very low public usage probably wouldn't be, well, they are not in our, in our, in our, um, criteria, uh, highly, um, prioritized, uh, that are not heavily used. We also wanted to make sure that, uh, program uniqueness, in other words, if you only have one facility for a particular program, you really can't relocate that activity, it has to be in that location, so program uniqueness was considered, we also looked at geographic distribution, so that all the accessible improvements to parks, for instance, aren't located on one quadrant of the city, we wanted to make sure there was some distribution, and wherever there was an identified complaint or request, uh, we wanted to acknowledge that, so that, those five criteria were, uh, considered in the prioritization of the, uh, of the, of the plan. And that resulted in, uh, a listing of, uh, facilities within some five-year, uh, timeframes, and this, this, uh, this, uh, framework plan has a fifteen-year, uh, horizon, and, uh, that is not, uh, that is not dictated by the ADA expressly by the legislation, but it is pretty consistent with, uh, with, uh, other communities, and with case law, frankly, uh, so, a fif- teen year, longer than that, you have people start looking at scamps at how long you're taking to do what actually is required by law to have done, you know, the ADA was enacted thirty years ago yesterday, by the way, uh, and at that time, you were given five years, in other words, nineteen ninety-five, to have all the work done. So, um, that, that, uh, that, those days have come and gone, so now the reality is many, uh, public agencies uh, are, most public agencies, if I could be truthful, are, are en- engaging in a very long-term process to uh, work out these barrier issues over time, so here's a five-year, uh, one, uh, one to, one to five, one to ten, and one to fifteen-year scenario. Now, these are not written in stone, this is the result of current staff and focus group vetting. This is like the Park and Recreation Master Plan, a living document, and, um, and also, it's not that you have to do, this is not under rank order, so in other words, in that first, uh, set of years, city hall is at the top, and it's not like you have to finish city hall before you move on to the North Country Fire Authority Administration Building. You, you know, these are, these are, these are, uh, you can work across these, uh, and you, as projects come, as renovations uh, are scheduled for any one of these facilities, that's the one to make the accessibility improvements in, so this is a a framework and kind of a resource, informational resource, uh, for staff to, to move forward. Uh, the right-of-way, uh, we reviewed every sidewalk and every curb cut in Daly City, and it is now in a relational database, in a GIS database, uh, and when improvements are made, uh, or when grants are applied for, you now have a large, uh, resource of information or to pull from and make a case for improvements in certain areas. So this will also help in your bicycle and pedestrian, uh, master plan, and further work in the pedestrian, uh, world, so this is a, this is a substantial area. Now, here the criteria is a little bit different, rather than some of the ones we mentioned, we are using what the ADA does require us to use for criteria for prioritizing, and, uh, and we also added the location of, um, locations where citizen complaints or requests were, have been, uh, received, because we know, and the staff, both staff and the focus group were very clear that we needed to make sure that those were attended to. Uh, so, those are criteria that are, uh, across the top of this matrix. Uh, locations serving government offices and public facilities are in the B category, and as we get, uh, further down the priority listing, we, we have, uh, locations serving transportation, locations serving commercial districts, and finally, uh, locations serving other areas. And then, um, along the other axis, that is the severity of the problem, and we vetted that as well, so that, uh, problem is like a curb ramp that's very steep or broken and dangerous, that would be in the first category, that would result in an A1 category for that particular barrier in the public right-of-way. So this, as you can see, has been carefully considered and, uh, and now is in the, uh, database accessible and usable by uh, city staff. The plan also, uh, helps define and clarify, uh, the roles of the ADA coordinator, who works with all departments, that's why it's great that Mr. Chu is, uh, designated as that person, he has purview over all city departments, can work easily with department heads and others. Um, and then, uh, he also, he, he will also be responsible for processing the ADA complaints, in other words, that grievance procedure, which is a requirement of the plan. Uh, the grievance procedure is, uh, consistent and compliant with the ADA requirements, and you did have this grievance procedure before we started, so I think this has been a, a good thing, uh, we got, nice and want to, uh, laud the city for all the work you have been doing, you know, in all of your departments and programs, when we do our questionnaire, uh, review and evaluations of city staff and how people are accommodated, uh, who have disabilities in the provisions of city services, we were very pleased to see the level of, um, commitment and knowledge that many people in the staff had. Well, in fact, we are yet to complete our responsibility as consultants. Uh, we are going to be scheduling staff training workshops, in which we'll be working with customer service staff to talk about how to accommodate people on the phone or counters. We'll also be working with maintenance staff to look at some of the low-hanging fruit, and some of the things that can be easily done to help, uh, the facilities be, um, accessible, and some of the next steps for the city will be budgeting for the ADA barrier removal, but remember too, that not, it's never the requirement that all of the barriers that have been developed or identified have to be removed, you can use that, uh, criteria of, of, uh, relocating activities, you can also look at the level of barrier, or the level of issue, some of them are very easy to repair or fix maintenance improvements, and others are more, uh, capital improvements, and others are large capital, so that's a, that's, that is on the shoulders of your competent staff, and I think this is something that will be, uh, worked on, uh, into the future, so I think that wraps up my presentation, and we're glad to, uh, answer any question or hear your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, uh, this time I'll open it up for council for any comments. All right, um, yes?
No, go ahead, Mayor.
Um, Mr. Gilbert, uh, thank you for your presentation, uh, y- you know, we've had, um, calls in before to council regarding ADA issues, and I'm very, very happy to hear that, uh, we're maintaining these complaints, and especially through a relational database, which, uh, is the best way to go, because it decreases redundancy, and, uh, that's hard to manage and to even create such a database, so I have to commend you for that. Mr. Chu, I have to commend you, because taking on the title of ADA coordinator, I mean, uh, that's something big. Uh, most other places, they actually pay somebody separately, but that's under your job scope as well, so, uh, the city is very, very happy to have you, sir, and, uh, it's very much appreciated. So, uh, thanks for the complete transparency and heads up, uh, ADA remains a, a, an issue, and the best way we can continue to track it is by the input, garbage in, garbage out, so, uh, and knowing what the city can and cannot do, whether it's administrative burden, or whether it's, uh, too expensive, I mean, these are all good things to know, and I can't remember all these things, and, and, and you, sir, uh, Mr. Gilbert, you do, so, uh, to have you as a consultant and someone we can reach out to you, it's very, very important, so, thank you, thank you all so much. Okay, Vice Mayor, Florez Joors.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, thank you, Mr. Gilbert, and thank you Director Chu, and, uh, staff that's working on this, I think, um, as, uh, we continue to do other work, having this, uh, assessment and roadmap on ways we can continue to improve and ensure that there's more accessibility, uh, to all, is so important, and so, um, yeah, just reviewing what you've presented to us, um, is extremely important, and I know that you've mentioned that, you know, many of our staff is knowledgeable already, but really with your work in assessing where we're at and what we can do, I think this provides, um, great, uh, implementation strategies that you've laid out, um, and I know that, uh, the staff is working hard to see where those, uh, um, implementation action can be provided, given the fact that it's very, uh, you know, there's so many layers to it, um, but, um, this is definitely, oh, like the other report, extremely comprehensive, and I know a lot of hard work has been put into this, when looking at even the assessment of, um, curbsides, and, and, I mean, it's, um, very thorough and much needed, as, um, stated earlier, that we, we needed to have this done, so I just wanted to say thank you for all the work and the communications on this.
Okay.
Mayor?
Uh, ho- yes, Pam, I got you, I, I want, uh, before it gets too late, I also want to thank Ms. Calles, because I forgot, uh, she's a project manager, and I, I feel, uh, uh, you are the one-
As we all know, well, so, that ADA is celebrating thirty years, yay! So we've come a long ways, uh, from, from thirty years ago, but much work to do, and I have to say, Mr. Gilbert, you've taken it on to where these are not easy fixes, because of the way things were constructed from prior, to say that you went to every single one of our curb cut, you know, they're talking about thorough in Daly City, that had to be something. Uh, so, uh, thank you for that, and your staff, and, and, uh, Ms. Sabelli, you know that you always do such a great job, always with a smile, and, uh, it was a fantastic presentation, it was fun to have you do the presentation as well, I'm glad you were part of the team, and Mr. Chu, you're taking on, as the mayor said, ADA coordinator, wow! I mean, is there anything that Mr. Chu can't do? So, uh, thank you for that, and, uh, to have you on as part of the team, Mr. Gilbert, and being a part of our Daly City, where you know that, that it is so important, so important to be inclusive of everyone, and no one likes, because you don't never know where you're going to find yourself, um, in life, whether it's born with a, oh, challenged with a disability, or something happens to you in your life, uh, some of us have crossed those bridges, um, that we never know, or no one complains about. It can happen to anyone, and to know that, yeah, you, it changes your life totally, and to- And to know that, that there shouldn't be any, um, challenges when they want access, especially to our city. Because this belongs to everyone and the word inclusive to me is so, so important. So, um, I can see in detail inclusivity. And one of the mothers that attended one of your meetings tonight that couldn't get on, Joyce, wants to tell you her son is autism spectrum and she's with Gate Path, by the way. And, um, shares your great vision with her heart as a mom. And working with Gate Path as well and Mr. Santos, which is a part of our school district, his son as well. And people don't realize there's, yes, this is what, this is what it is. When I see your face like that, I know because you are touching people who otherwise have gone through our parks, gone to our city, and they can't get in. They don't have a way to get in. And it should not be any barriers for anyone like that because, um, no guarantees in life. And we are all one people and where there are maybe some see it as limitless. The other people will see it as, these people are extraordinary. So I thank you so much from the bottom of my heart on behalf of Joyce and Gate Path and the mothers and, and, um, it's, it's where we should be, is where we should be. And, uh, thank you, thank you so much. Very heartfelt. Thank you, Sabelli, Mr. Chu and engineering and everyone. Thank you. Public works.
Okay. Uh, any other comments?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, um, introduce a motion to adopt a resolution accepting the ADA self-evaluation transitional plan.
Second.
Okay, I'll hold on to that for right now. Like to check to see if we have any public comments on this matter.
No public comment, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Halti. Okay, final comment. Um, uh, I'd like to make one final comment and, uh, it's a name, uh, we haven't really put out there this evening. I'd like to thank our city manager for, uh, seeing this and probably went through everything. Let's look into this. Let's look into that. Let's do this. And it does not come overnight. So just wanted to let you know, Ms. Malpe, you are definitely appreciated and it definitely shows the work that you do. And in doing so, I've always learned that it's your subordinates or the folks underneath that make you look good. So you are good, Ms. Malpe. Just wanted to let you know.
Couldn't say, yeah, you, you hit it right on the head. Uh, I defer all of the accolades to staff on this one, but I appreciate the recognition for sure.
Absolutely, Ms. Malpe. Okay, so we have a motion by, um, Dr. Rod and a second by, I think it was, uh, Councilmember Di Giovanni. Was it you who seconded or was it by?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have a first and second. Any further discussion? Comments? Okay, I'll entertain, uh, let me see, roll call please by, uh, Madam City Clerk, please.
Let me, Ms. Di Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Aye for me. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Mayor.
It's getting late. It's okay. Okay, thank you all so much and we'll move on. You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, Ms. Kaya's and Mr. Chu. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is public appearances. And we're going to turn it over to Mr. Salty. I see he's already unmuted and ready to go. Mr. Salty.
We have actually covered all of the public comments already.
Wow. Okay, great job. Thank you so much. Moving on, uh, appointments, the board, commission, membership, committee appointments, any to report or to, uh, recommend? Or bring before council? Okay, none at this time. Moving down to reports, uh, council committee reports. Dr. Rod, I see you're unmuted. You ready to go?
Yeah, I'm ready. Um, I'll just do quick highlights from my meeting with Peninsula Clean Energy, um, last Thursday. Uh, a couple of highlights is they have a program called Power on Peninsula, AKA POP or POP. And they're offering a clean energy through solar and battery, um, low cost to priority customers. Also, they're also providing, uh, portable batteries, uh, to 150 qualifying customers that prior to, that where they prioritize medical and find, and those in financial need. Um, and we also approved the proposal for, um, an e-bike. There's been a growing, um, interest in electronic bikes. And we supported a rebate program to issue for, uh, 300 electric bikes for low income residents over the next three years. And we seen that they, one of the, the presentations said that there's been a trend that more people are going and using the, um, electronic bikes. If they are living close to their work, um, and to use electronic bikes than their cars. So that's a good, um, uh, highlight in terms of reducing greenhouse gases. And that's all for me.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Rod. Uh, can you send me information on that medical thing? Uh, the battery?
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, it says a combination of medical and then there's one, uh, for the financially, but I'm more concerned about the medical. So, uh,
Gotcha.
No, because we have a lot of brownouts. Thank you. Um, uh, let's see, uh, I have one for council committee and that is, um, mosquito vector. Apparently they're looking for a new director. They conducted interviews this, uh, past week. And we will soon be selecting a new, uh, director for the mosquito abatement. Uh, Dr. Chindy PV is, um, uh, is going to be leaving us. So I will keep you all posted on that. Okay, any other council, uh, committee reports?
I have a report from, uh, the Bosca, the Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency that I attended on July 16. Um, and so, um, usually at those meetings, we do get, um, and the water supply, uh,
Vice Mayor, you've froze. You said.
I'm frozen?
Yeah, you said normally during the meetings you get, and that's the last that I heard.
Okay, okay. Am I not, am I unfrozen?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we get a report on the Bay, uh, the Bosco Water Supply Report as well. And so in, uh, May 2020, um, Bosco agencies were down 21% in water usage compared to May 2013. Um, also, uh, we talked about a special report on the Las Vascaros expansion. It was a lengthy discussion on that, but that item will be brought to the board for its consideration. It's in September. Uh, also, um, the Bay Delta Plan Update. Uh, Bosco continues to support the Bay Delta Plan objectives and its commitment to working with other stakeholders to protect the water quality also in the Bay Delta for humans, fish and wildlife. Um, and also, uh, the CEO has written a letter to Governor Newsom asking for his federal leadership to initiate an environmental review of the Tuleme, uh, River Voluntary Agreement by the State Water Resources Control Board. Uh, the next meeting will be held on September 17th. Um, and also, uh, something important was there was an audit of the SFPUC Operation and Maintenance Programs, which really looked at the ma- management programs of the regional water system. And so this audit included a document review, um, also interviews with the staff of Bosca and, um, also key staff in the he- hedgeheady water system. And the final report has been prepared and available on their website. And so, um, it was definitely a lengthy but informative meeting, I would say.
Wow. Uh, Vice Mayor, did you say 21%? Is that 21% lost revenue or 21% uh, less usage of water?
Uh, it's le- it's less usage.
Wow, I would think with folks being at home, you'd use more. Wow, thank you for that. Okay, any other, um, council committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to council committee meetings between the period of July 13th through the 26th. Unless I'm missing anything, I, I, I can't recall having a, a meeting. Anyone? All right, how about, uh, city council reports?
Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, it's important to let the public know that we did have a special meeting, uh, last Wednesday in regards to the Black Lives Matter Movement Resolution in which, um, the members that were present were able to pass it unanimously to support, um, the, you know, the further steps in regards to, um, what the next steps will entail moving forward within, um, the city. Um, and it was definitely a robust discussion, um, but, uh, we all supported the resolution. Um, and for the, um, public to know, um, that was passed last Wednesday.
Uh, that's a good point, Vice Mayor. And, um, the small P, I, I, um, is, is that going to be, uh, publicly announced or agendized for the public to know that it was passed a resolution?
So it was publicly announced by way of that council meeting, special meeting of last Wednesday. However, we can absolutely place it on our, uh, social media sites, our website. Um, but by way of formality, it has been passed and adopted by the council.
Uh, thank you very much and thank you, Vice Mayor, for the reminder. That was a very important, uh, resolution and we all came together and, uh, passed it. So thank you very much for that reminder. Okay, any additional city council reports?
Mayor, would you like to play that video at this time?
Oh, I was gonna, I thought, um, the, uh, city manager was going to do that.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Uh, Ms. Malpe, uh, for city managers' report.
So, uh, let's share it, shall we? I'm going to share this spot with the mayor, vice mayor and council just to show, um, our community, um, that we're here for them during this time. And we, we are doing things differently and virtually in some cases and a lot of cases. But, um, we are proud of the work that we're doing. We're open to suggestions, but, um, let's go ahead and roll that video, shall we?
Hello, I'm Glenn Sylvester, Mayor of Daly City, and I'm honored to be here with you all today. Over the past several months, our community has experienced unprecedented impacts as a result of COVID-19. I know this has been a very difficult time for our residents and businesses. We applaud the community for doing their part to keep each other safe and healthy. As our society slowly reopens, we commend our community for continuing to wear face coverings in public and maintain physical distance. The city of Daly City has been proactive in supporting our residences and businesses. Since our declaration of a local emergency on March 16th, all 11 city departments have worked tirelessly to preserve critical public services while protecting the health and safety of city employees and members of the public. The planning, building and engineering divisions have continued to provide remote review of projects and in-person assistance by appointment. The North County Fire Authority, the Police Department and the Department of Water and Waste Water Resources have maintained 24-hour operations throughout the pandemic. Staying connected with our community remains a top priority. We partnered with Open Gov to offer virtual public commenting in our city council and commission meetings on a convenient webpage. We've launched robust communication efforts by frequently updating our homepage and social media to provide latest information on COVID-19. Producing weekly PSA videos with key city officials and creating new residential and business mailers. We've also launched a volunteer campaign and are accepting requests for help through a new hotline and our website. We ended utility shut-offs and late fees and interest charges on past due balances and transition to online bill pay. We temporarily suspended street sweeping so that residents who were staying at home would not face parking challenges and extended expirations of residential parking permits. We also extended due dates of library materials through the end of July and continue to pair staff with at-risk residents for regular check-ins. The Recreation Division has increased the provision of meals, providing grab and go packages that include five pro-ven meals. Staff has served over 5,500 curbside meals since the shelter-in-place orders began in March and currently delivers meals to 46 home volunteers. You know, soon after the shelter-in-place orders were inactive, the Virtual Recreation Center was born. In just one click, residents can access arts and crafts, sports and fitness, food projects, science projects and more. In July, our Summer Youth Recreation Program commenced with strict safety protocols while the bubble coverts of youth cannot go on field trips. There are plenty of fun onsite activities like our kids event that included a modified dunk tank game. The Library Division is also providing virtual services in the form of storytime, arts and crafts and game nights. And more recently, are offering curbside pickups and holds by mail. Our library staff is leading a community history project to document how the pandemic has impacted the lives of our community members. This project is for all ages and everyone is encouraged to share. We know that secure housing has become even more important during the pandemic. In March, the city provided $100,000 in housing trust funds to the Community Service Center to continue a residential emergency rental assistance program. In June, the city allocated over $430,000 in New Cares Act funds to further address high demand for rental support. To assess local businesses, the city council accrued $75,000 donation to the SMC Strong Fund and created a new business resources website. Staff continued to assist with critical housing development throughout the pandemic. The city has deployed staff and resources to assist community organizations such as the Daly City Partnership, Second Harvest Food Bank and Pacific Islanders Together that provide vital services to our community. When our local hospital, Seton, struggled to secure enough personal protective equipment to keep our frontline workers safe, Daly City donated 500 protective gowns, 750 pairs of gloves and 100 masks from limited city inventory of supplies. All city departments are actively preparing plans for a full reopening and to ensure any visitors to our facilities remain safe and healthy. We are installing safety measures like sanitation stations and grass shears. And we look forward to welcoming our community back in person. Thank you for working together to protect your neighbors, friends and family with your continued commitment. We will get through this pandemic as a unified community. We are Daly City's strong.
Thank you, Ms. Malpe. Uh, anything further or you'd like to report?
Uh, that's it. That was, uh, fun to report out on and. That's it, that was fun to report out on, and thank you to staff for putting that together.
Yeah, excellent job. I mean, I saw the preview of it, and you get a much better enjoyment from it when you can hear the background music playing, and very good job. I'd like to thank Leilani for coordinating that. And actually, this was a plan for Supervisor Canapa on a town call with the mayors, and that did not happen. So we've actually had this for quite some time, and we just put it off and didn't put it out until we can show it to everyone tonight. So I'd like to thank my colleagues, I'd like to thank all of staff, and we are continuing to do the best that we can, given the current situation that we're in. So thank you again, Ms. Malpe, and thank you, everyone. Okay, at this time, I'd like to move on to adjournment.
Before you... I have a comment and actually a question. I see that we're obviously, as a city, doing a lot, and I'm very thankful and I applaud the efforts that we've all done. And I think we're moving in the right direction, and Shauna and the staff are very innovative and creative, and so I'm grateful for that. The question I did have is, you know, Supervisor Canapa has been very aggressive in sending the message to the community about wearing masks. And in your video, which I thought was really well-done, you know, people are wearing masks. I'm wondering, however, if it's time for us as a city to take the bold step in actually passing an ordinance requiring people to wear masks. And I don't know with respect to what other cities have done or have attempted to do, but my fear is that people are gonna relax, that there's obviously an uptick, and we're the only county that is not on the watch list, although I'm hearing that might be coming. And so I'd like, you know, to see if Shauna, if you have any plans on that, or Ms. Zimmerman, what is the research or the law with respect to a city passing such an ordinance? And I realize that obviously we are not having a meeting in August, but I think the urgency is there that if we could at least preliminarily do the research, do the homework on what we can do as a city to pass such an ordinance.
Ms. Malpe, before you answer that, I'd like to interject a couple of comments as well. The video was a prelude, and I hate to put this on you, Ms. Malpe, but I would like to see more videos, especially with the council and basically all of us being together and share to the community. I think this is gonna definitely make us stand out. I agree with Councilmember Buena Ventura. This is a critical issue now, especially in the area of wearing masks. I would like us to somehow move forward as soon as we can to get it out there that it's mandatory, and if we do it as an ordinance, I would definitely would like to move forward on that. I do recall that folks have contacted me outside of Daly City, and I'll let the council know, I did share this with Ms. Malpe. I mean, even considering passing an ordinance to close down State Thornton's parking lot to prevent people from going out to the beach and congregating. We're dealing with a pandemic here, and, you know, we need to address this issue. And I think it's very, very important that we work together to move forward on this. So, Ms. Malpe, to Councilmember Buena Ventura's suggestion, I would like to hear from my colleagues and their thoughts, and then we can entertain, Ms. Malpe, whatever you feel, and the city attorney, your advice. Vice Mayor, I see you had unchewed yourself, so go ahead.
Thank you. No, I think most, I think I'm in agreement and research to find out ways, you know, or how to create an ordinance. I'm in favor of that, just to ensure that people's safety happens. For me, I'd also like research to find out, and is there ways we can actually get masks that are not so costly for us? I mean, I think for me, the other issue is, are they wearing it because they don't have one? Or, you know, they're not doing it just because, right? And so for me, I think the accessibility to masks, if there are, I don't know. I mean, I know we are also in a crunch for funds, but it's just a thought around, maybe, maybe people need access to them. I don't know, I mean, I know you could get them at cheaper places now or whatnot, but it was just a thought, but I am in support of Councilmember Buena Ventura's request to have further research on an ordinance moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Dejira Vani.
I don't know, are we allowed to discuss this now?
No. It's just a suggestion, and, you know, I'm gonna defer to Ms. Malpe and the city attorney follow-up, but if you have any comments on this particular matter, we're not taking action.
Oh, yeah, you're right, we're not taking action. But I mean, we see people without, obviously without face coverings, and they're coming, they come here from everywhere, especially when, I do know that when San Mateo County was the only county open, people came from other counties, then our numbers go up as well, right? So how are we gonna control all that?
Yes, good question.
I guess not to look into that, right, Mayor?
So I'm sorry, there should be some clarification, Mayor. May I clarify that? When there's numbers being discussed, it's actually if you're a resident of the particular city, like city in which the numbers, you know, it's not if they come in and then they get COVID and they're counted in San Mateo County. That's not how the health officer counts cases.
Yeah, they don't count, but at the same time, that doesn't help not spreading it, correct? But anyway...
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because you said that's how it's gonna, yeah.
Spread.
Thank you.
I was worried about the spreading. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and then I'm sure we're gonna be having other discussions, and I don't know if people want to come back. I guess we're not coming back in August, but...
Well...
So whatever council wants.
Thanks, Pam, appreciate that. Okay, before I turn it over to Ms. Malpe and the city attorney, Dr. Rod, did you have any comments, or we'll move on?
Yeah, I agree, I think we should just have more research on what other municipalities have done in terms of creating ordinances, but also just to, yes, I agree with the mayor in terms of putting more production, more promotions about there, because sometimes I feel like culture precedes legislation at times, so we can normalize the fact that wearing a mask is beneficial to our health and the spread of COVID-19. I've been seeing memes a lot saying, like, if people can do this for a certain amount of hours, you can do this, go into the grocery store. So I feel like we need to create messaging out there in terms of really normalizing the fact that we need to do this.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Malpe and Madam City Attorney, we'll leave it up to you, and you have the floor.
Okay, I'll start and say that I totally appreciate this discussion. It doesn't surprise me in any way. There's a two-pronged approach in my perspective. And the first is education for sure, and the Board of Supervisors for the County of San Mateo is definitely looking at further educating the public on wearing masks, and in particular Supervisor Canapa, his, like, just where the mask is sort of his mantra right now. And so I've reached out to Supervisor Canapa, how can we help you propel that message? So education for sure, and in my humble opinion, is kind of, you know, where we need to go. As far as an ordinance, we certainly, and I will defer to the city attorney on process, but we certainly can consider it, look into it. And my only concern about an ordinance is that it perhaps may be more symbolic than anything else because the enforcement of such an ordinance could be particularly challenging. Who would that fall on? Would it be our police department? Would, you know, who would enforce such an ordinance? But it doesn't mean that we won't research that. So those are my initial thoughts, and I will defer to the city attorney about any other process pieces that she might want to talk about.
So for purposes of an ordinance, as you know, it's a first and second reading. So if the council is really looking at an ordinance, I probably would advise, since you do want to have it sooner, that we would probably do an emergency ordinance so that you would kind of defray that first and second reading. Cities have, there are cities who have done their own type of ordinance in terms of establishing what they think they need to do to enforce it. So that's definitely something we as a city can do, and I think it would really stem on the policy direction and the research and how the city would like to do that, because as the city manager has indicated, part of the teeth, so to say, you can write any ordinance, is the enforcement and what level of enforcement we would like. And the current order as it stands gives the discretion to the police department as well as the city attorney's office to enforce fees. Obviously, this can be enforced as a misdemeanor. I would assume that if the council would like to have an ordinance, that it would probably be civil fees and penalties, administrative fees, as opposed to establishing it as a misdemeanor, which is already enforceable through the county orders at this point in time. So again, it's one of those things that if the council wanted to come back, there is a noticing requirement. When we're looking at the first meeting, we come back in September. So if there are research to be done in terms of coming back to us, you would just need lead time on how you want to have that look like.
All right. Thank you, Madam City Attorney and City Manager. I think, given the circumstances, and I think we should call for an emergency meeting if we can get draft language printed up and if we can at least move forward. I'm sure that this is an important issue enough for the council that it may be amenable to meeting and moving forward. Councilmember Buena Ventura?
Yeah, I would suggest that the staff just move forward with researching the issue, and as soon as they're ready to give us options and what it looks like, then we talk about agendizing it for an emergency meeting. And so the timetable will depend on how soon the staff can get us the research.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura, for bringing that important point to board with us, and we look forward to a follow-up from staff. Thank you so much. So we're done with the City Manager's Report and additional comments made by here by the council colleagues. So the next item will move to, before we move to the next item, is there any other comments?
I do, the rationale and why I asked if there's ways to find out if we can get economical masks is that potentially, maybe, and this, I know, it's just further down the line, but my more thought process was like, okay, if someone's not wearing it, then they kind of have like this first pass of like, well, here's a mask, you know? Like, wear it, and then, I don't know, I know staff is gonna research, but I wanted to say what my rationale was in regards to kind of seeing if it was access or just behavior, but giving, you know, the opportunity for that person, you know? Okay, now they have a mask, right? And so, but that's just my thought, and I know we'll get more information from staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, we'll move on next to adjournment, and I'd like to start off with Councilmember Dejira Vani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's getting late, but in the interest of time, we can't go without adjourned in memory of our two recent civil rights icons that passed on the same days, ironically, and one being C.T. Vivian, ninety-five years old, and the other being, as you know, Henderson Ron Lewis, who is eighty years old. There's so many things we could go into, so many quotes, and through these men have heard. And I would just like to say, it was one small quote, and that we all have so many thoughts about these men who have paved and actually sacrificed their lives and given so much for the road of our civil rights as we are today. And so, here's a quick one from town voice. "You are a light, you are the light. Never let anyone, any person, or any force dampen or diminish your light." And so if anybody hasn't read any of the books or anything like that, I recommend, and I don't know if they're gonna go into the ethnic studies or whatever, but on your own, I recommend that you do. For those of us that lived through many of the eras of the busing and other issues that went on, that these two icons who were with us, and we worked in the services, hope that we're doing research, and maybe we can still, I don't know, Ms. Malpe, found out if we're gonna keep the flags, as South City does, is gonna keep theirs, have staff, while Mr. Lewis is having his services. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejira Vani. Do we have any others to report at this point?
I believe on the thing was, I thought the mayor, would you like to close in memory of Bullock or the K-9?
Yeah, I will do that, I have two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, does anyone else have any to report on? Okay. As I value human life above all, not to belittle thou canine partner, I'd like to acknowledge the untimely passing of Mr. O'Donnell. I received that notice earlier this afternoon. Mr. O'Donnell passed away this past Saturday, and he is the husband of Mayor O'Donnell of Brisbane. So I'd like to adjourn in his memory. In regards to our employees and our immediate family members of Daly City, I would like to also adjourn in memory of Bullock. Daly City Police Officer Matt Chuchis, K-9 partner Bullock, passed away unexpectedly in the early hours of July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, following medical complications. Bullock was a long-haired malinois and served our community for eight years. Let me see, what's a dog's life, like seven for every year of a human life or something? So I guess that would make him fifty-six. During that time, Bullock was an important part of the patrol division as well as the SWAT team, where he assigned, assisted in the safety of officers during high-risk operations. Bullock was Officer Chuchis' K-9 partner during his assignment to the Drug Enforcement Agency's Metro Task Force. Bullock was very effective in tracking apprehension and narcotics odor detection. Bullock assisted Officer Chuchi in apprehending dozens of... Bullock assisted Officer Chucci in apprehending dozens of criminal, dangerous criminals, the seizures of many pounds of dangerous narcotics, and ultimately, the seizure of hundreds of thousands of dollars in drug proceeds. Officer Chucci and Bullock participated in dozens of public events leading to an understanding of his role of canine in police work and as well as building relationships with the community. Bullock was a part of Officer Chucci's family at home, having a special relationship with his wife and children. Bullock served his community with tenacity and unwavering dedication alongside Officer Chucci. He will be greatly missed by both his Daly City Police Department family as well as his family at home. You know, given my past experience and from what I know of canine dogs, it is incumbent upon them to basically distinguish between family, friends, and and it is imperative that they are around children as well so that they can understand the family environment. So to be around children and adults, it takes a special, a special animal to do that. So I'd like to adjourn in memory of Bullock. So with that being said, if we can pause for a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned. Please don't go anywhere. I think Rose was ready to chime up and say, hey, Mayor, you forgot something. So what I would like to do now is call to order the Daly City Housing Development Finance Agency. This is a special meeting, and it looks like we only have one item on the agenda, but I'll go in order. So I'd like after calling this meeting to order Madam City Clerk, Madam Roque, please.
Ms. Dejira Vani? Ms. Dejira Vani? Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod? Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
And Mr. Sylvekter?
Present. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I obtain a motion to accept the minutes from April 27, 2020.
Motion to approve minutes from April 27, 2020.
Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Dejira Vani, a motion by Vice Mayor Manalo. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Okay, thank you. Starting off with item number one, Resolutions to Extend the Timeframe for Loan Agreement Between Daly City Housing Development Finance Agency and the S.H.P. Foundation for Property Located at 115, 131 East Mulkey Street and 260 Abbott Street. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Betsy Zobel.
Good evening, Chair and members of the agency board. Before you tonight is a request to extend a conditional loan commitment in order to provide time to finalize loan, property transfer, and regulatory agreements associated with a $2.9 million loan between S.H.P. Foundation and the Daly City Housing Development Finance Agency. The conditional loan agreement was originally executed in 2018 to help fund the acquisition and rehabilitation of 16 units located on East Mulkey Street. The original agency action also envisioned the transfer of 260 Abbott, a five-unit building and former redevelopment agency asset to S.H.P. Foundation. 260 Abbott is in very close proximity to the East Mulkey Apartments, and transfer to the S.H.P. Foundation was seen as a way to ensure the long-term affordability and professional management of the Abbott units. A conditional loan commitment was executed rather than an immediate disbursement of funds in order to give the foundation time to complete various due diligence tasks, such as confirmation of existing tenant incomes, a physical needs assessment, and determination of rehabilitation needs. The conditional loan commitment was extended in January of 2020 until the 31st of July to provide more time for due diligence activities. As of early July, S.H.P. Foundation has completed all of the due diligence activities described in the original conditional loan agreement. General agreement has been reached with staff regarding income targeting and provisions for existing residents. At this point, the only remaining task prior to closing the loan with S.H.P. Foundation is to finalize loan documents and a development and disposition agreement relating to the transfer of 260 Abbott. These documents should be completed and ready for review by the Affordable Housing Committee in August. Therefore, staff recommends extension of the conditional loan agreement by four months until October 31, 2020, to provide enough time for staff review and approval of final documents. The agency's investment of housing trust funds into East Mulkey Abbott will result in the preservation and rehabilitation of 20 units for very low-income households, households that would likely have been displaced if the properties were sold to a market rate owner. Staff recommends that the agency extend the conditional loan commitment with S.H.P. Foundation for another four months until October 31, 2020. And with that, I'm available for questions. And I believe Christina Lee, a representative from S.H.P. Foundation, is with us this evening as well.
Thank you, Ms. Zobel. Do we have any comments from council? Okay, I have a comment. Ms. Zobel, did we have a breakdown of demographic as to low-income folks who are occupying these units?
I don't. I would have to, I don't have it at my fingertips. Christina, are you on the call still?
Yes, I am. But unfortunately, I don't know if I have that available either.
Okay, and could we also obtain information as to how long the tenants have been there and the mechanism for marketing for if and when units become available?
I think that we do have how long the existing tenants have already been there. And I think, let me, if you can hold on. Let's see, what do we have here? So the length of time that the various existing tenants have been there varies from as long as 20 years to some that have only been there a year. And it's just kind of, kind of, on average, I'm going to say the average tendency is about eight to 10 years. But it spans, and we do have a very specific breakdown by unit. But like I said, oh, actually, there's one that's been there since 1994. And then about a handful that have been there, two or three that have been there for about 20 years. So I'm going to say the average is about 10 years.
Thank you. My concern is, without knowing the breakdown and as to the demographics and having the availability, if folks were marginalized from getting one of these units and moving on, you know, making them available and advertising and putting these units out. Are they on a yearly lease or a one-year lease? Or based upon their income, they get to stay indefinitely? It seems like we have a few who are in that category.
The draft, the draft marketing and residence selection plan for this property envisions that residents will be able to stay as provided that they qualify by income with the target income being 50% AMI. So provided that they, their incomes, and I think that we've had an initial discussion with the Affordable Housing Committee that their incomes would be allowed to go up to 120% AMI or perhaps 140% AMI. But at some point, they would get a notice to move out if their incomes went up beyond a certain threshold. And I don't think we've quite come to a finalizing what that threshold is. To the extent that units become available, the resident selection plan envisions that there will be a waitlist kept, first come, first served. And at the time when there are not enough names on the waitlist to fill vacant units, there would be a general outreach and marketing throughout the community, particularly targeting groups that are underrepresented.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
No, thank you, Mayor, for those questions. I think these were some of the questions that we had prior in our Affordable Housing Committee. But a very important question to bring up in regards to sustainability of the units moving forward for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, so this is a resolution to extend the timeframe. And according to Ms. Zobel, it looks like we're going to extend for additional four months to October. And we'll move forward on taking the vote. So it doesn't call for a roll call vote, so I'll just put it out there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before Rose gets to me, I have to entertain the book first.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it looks like the motion passes. I thank you very much, Ms. Zobel. Is Stephen out the front row? Is there any public comment on this matter?
There's no public comment.
Okay, thank you so much. This meeting is now adjourned. Stay safe, stay healthy, and stay strong, everyone, and thank you so much. This meeting is now adjourned.